Welcome, everyone. We're coming back out of a closed session. We had a conference with labor negotiators this evening and a conference with real property negotiators. We have nothing to report from those two items, but I'd like to welcome you here this evening to our regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council Tuesday, June 7th, 2016. Madam Clerk, can I get you to call the roll?
Councilmember Turner, present. Councilmember Matina, here. Councilmember Parlet, here. Councilmember Shields, here. And Mayor Spillane, here.
This evening, in honor of the election, I'd like to ask Councilman Shields if he would lead us in the press.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone would think that Councilman Shields is nervous, but he's like an absolute rock up here tonight. He's not nervous.
I'm nervous because of that collection box that's right in front of me. It's making me nervous.
If anyone would like to speak on anything that's not on our agenda tonight, there are four on the back table. You can fill those out now and turn those in to the city clerk here. We can't come to a consensus or make any decisions on anything that's not on our agenda, but you can fill those out and come up here and speak to us, and we'll know what you'd like to say to us. Now would be a good time to fill those out, if you haven't already. Next up this evening, we have acceptance of the agenda. Now, clerk, do we have the urgency items to it?
No, we do not.
I would entertain a motion to accept our agenda for this evening.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda. Next, I'll take off my glasses here because I can't see close up. Next up, we have our consent agenda this evening. Sorry, I'm a little humorous tonight. Bear with me. Next up, we have our consent agenda. We have ordinances waived except for reading. Item A. Item B, we have approved the regular minutes of the council meeting of May 17, 2016. Item C, we have approved the warrant register of May 25th, 2016. Item D, we have approved application 2016-015 with staff recommendations for the Lake County Arts Council and the Main Street Art Gallery, for the Spring Mazar to be held in and around the Yacht Club on June 11th, 2016. Item E, we have adoption of a resolution of the Lakeport City Council setting forth the terms of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. And last, we have item number F, ordinance introduction, delinquent accounts. We'll have kind of this two-stage item there, sitting as Lakeport City Council will be proposing an ordinance amending section 1304-060 of chapter 1304. And then also sitting as the board of directors of the CLMSD will be proposing an ordinance amending section 1320-360 of chapter 1320. I am going to, before I open this up for the public, I will, I missed the last meeting, so I'm going to recuse myself from item B, which would be approve the amendments. Are there any other items that anyone, councilpeople would like to pull? Are there any items on our consent agenda this evening that the public would like to comment on? Okay. Seeing done, I will bring that back to council for a motion on our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the consent agenda, items A, C through F. That's posted.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we would have to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will recuse myself from that one. Next up, we have item number five, which would be public presentation requests, which would be citizen input. And I see a nice, good stack of forms here. These are no special order, so I'll just start with Melissa Fulton.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council and staff. My name is Melissa Fulton. I'm CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here this evening, my original reason for coming was to thank city staff, the police department, the fire department, and Public Works for all of their assistance on the Memorial Day Parade. It was great as usual. We had a good turnout. We had a lot of entries this year. And it's something that couldn't happen without the cooperation of all of the city staff and those departments. We truly appreciate that very much on behalf of our membership and on behalf of everyone who comes to see the parade. So, thank you very much. Now, the second reason, which just happened by coincidence, is the fact that our own council member, Martin Shields, has consented, has volunteered, I should say.
Consent it may be more likely.
To be a candidate in a little contest that the chamber is putting on, and it is called Kiss My Clear Lake Bass. And so...
Did you mispronounce that?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, this is Marty's ballot box, which will be out in the lobby here on the Main Street desk. And so whoever gets the most votes, and it is a fundraiser, it's a dollar a vote, and it's to take off on an event that we did years ago called Kissipit. But when I brought it back to the board of directors, they said, wait a minute, we've got this Great Lake out here, we're known for bass fishing, how about this one? So that's what this is all about, and we really appreciate Marty stepping up and being a part of this. We have a dozen candidates, and we're looking forward to a fun time, actually, in Library Park on the afternoon of June 26th. So we invite the public to come down and participate. So I'll just leave this here for you.
And I fully support Brian Martin for everybody who voted for Sheriff Brian Martin.
And Sheriff Martin is supporting everybody else. Mo Simon says that his wife wants him to win, so it's all out there. So it should be a lot of fun for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Kind of sounds like Pass the Bass.
That, too.
Gosh, I hope I said that right. Next up, we have citizen input, Carol Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. To show that the first time I come here, I voice a concern. I live at 455 First Street, which is on the corner lot, and it's at the very low point on First Street, the other side of Forbes. And there's a drainage ditch that goes all the way around the corner of my property, which is prone to flooding. And I was anticipating that these wonderful improvements on First Street would reduce the flood risk to all the properties around about and improve the drainage in that ditch. Certainly, the new drains and the new pipes that have been put underground will reduce the runoff into people's yards and definitely therefore will deliver more water to the low point. The low point being the ditch that I'm talking about, which collects all the water before it runs into the creek. However, just today, when they started in my area, I discovered, I was told, that they are not improving the ditch at all. So imagine you have a beaker, a glass beaker, and you've got a big funnel, and you're pouring more and more water down the funnel, but the beaker is not doing a very good job to start with, and now it's got more water coming down to it. So I think you can appreciate, hopefully, what I'm saying. So, so far, I estimate, there's about a quarter mile of piping that's been put in down First Street. And the ditch I'm talking about is only about 200 feet or less. So really, I've come to request that somebody looks at the design of this and that the, hopefully, the budget would extend another 200 feet so that the piping that's coming into the ditch could be extended and go around this right angle corner, which causes lots of problems, and then into the ditch much more efficiently and carry that extra water. I think that's, I think that's it, really. I've actually put this down into an email and a sort of summary of my thinking, so I've already sent that to you, but I've also got a copy here to leave this evening.
Kevin, was there anything else you wanted to add on that? I don't know.
Yeah, I did, I had a chance to speak with Jim Kennedy of our Public Works Department today, too. He said that he had spoken with Carol out there on site and had brought it to our attention that there was some concern with this area. I'll certainly, you know, take that request back to Public Works, but basically what they've said at this point is that they've, you know, this is a project that has been looked at by our city engineer and designed to carry all that flow appropriately. I don't know specifically about the ditch, but they did say that they were certainly going to be cleaning it out and bringing it back to where it's supposed to be. There's quite a bit of sedimentation that has developed there over the years, and I don't think that there's any plans, as you stated, to put culvert in there, but they are planning on bringing that ditch back into its proper functioning. And they certainly have looked at the piping that goes across the area there and upsizing the drainage appropriately and calculated all to carry that flow appropriately. So that's, we'll, I'll certainly take it back to them and see what their stance is on the...
Yeah, I have taken all that into consideration. I have taken all that into consideration, and I can't understand why you would want to keep maintaining that ditch and having to clean it out every year when it's just for these two extra pieces of pipe, which, you know, help now. And my other concern is, well, two other concerns, just very briefly. One is that there's a new pipe coming across the road, which, I don't know why it's not being put, you know, here's the right angle, a new pipe comes across the road, and it's actually coming, not on the corner, but further along, and it hits, it's coming at 90 degrees, so it's going to hit the wall of the ditch on my side. I really don't understand why.
Yeah, all these items need to be taken to our engineer, and we'll definitely...
Yeah, yeah, really.
...review this.
But just quickly, the other concern is...
We don't have the expertise here at this moment to answer those questions.
And the children are playing in the ditch and pulling it all apart. They're continually doing that, so again...
Well, we can take care of those.
Yeah, we, we can beat the children.
I would very much appreciate it.
No, yeah, no, certainly, we'll all take those back to Public Works and, and if I can get a copy of the email as well, that's all.
I forwarded it to Margaret.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We'll make sure it gets to her.
We'll take a look at it.
I suddenly feel so bad because I remember when I lived in Ukiah, that neighbor across the street complained about my children digging in the culvert in the ditch with their GI Joes. And I told them, they're just playing. Now I feel bad. How things change. Next up, I have Dale, and I apologize, it looks like men, I can't...
It's a pronunciations issue.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Can you come on up?
Hello.
Can I get, can I get the spelling of your last name, just?
M.I.N.J.A.C.K.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You got wildly with your A and your C there, just a little bit.
My chicken scratch.
I'm sorry.
Can't read. I don't know if you all live in Lakeport and you received this flyer in your mail. When I initially received the flyer, I was like every other citizen, they're going to charge me 15 bucks every time I pick up my garbage can, first, you know, overfill. And it kind of upset me a little bit. Government wants 15 more bucks for my money and all that stuff. But the more I delved into it, I got on your website, looked at all the criteria, all your codes, all your regulations and all that stuff for the garbage contract with Lakeport Disposal. And in the meantime, I decided to come down here, and your chief financial officer was kind enough to come out and talk to me today. And my question was, where are your contractual obligations or oversight? Does Lakeport Disposal have the authority to actually, in their opinion, tack on an additional $15 charge because your garbage can lid might be a half inch from being shoved down and shut? And I guess the main reason that it concerns me more than myself, there are so many elderly people in this area, and if they read, if they read this and they go to their garbage can in the morning, they're not going to have a clue. They might have one bag in there, and it might be keeping the lid from closing all the way down, and they're going to get charged 15 bucks and/or their garbage isn't going to be collected that day. And in conjunction with that, when I talked with your chief financial officer today, and I asked him about the surcharge and where it showed up in any of your contracts or oversight, it doesn't exist, he basically told me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's a contract with Lakeport Disposal, and we basically let them do, run their own side. My background was 20 years reading governmental contracts, not one that I ever gave a subcontract for free rein to increase and/or decrease the price. It was written down in the contract, they had to meet that. And I just think there should be more oversight and a little more leeway, especially with the older people. I mean, I get it, if you stub your garbage can and it's flying out in the street, somebody's got to be told to count it. But the way this is written, it's just, it's like letting a fox in the chicken coop. If I am creating my own income on a contract with no oversight whatsoever, especially in government setting, I've never heard of it, ever. And I thank you for listening to me. I know it's garbage, but thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Last?
Yes, can we get... First of all, the additional money's not the city's, it's the contractor that collects that for the, for picking up the open, the containers that are too full, it's not the city fee. And there is a contract, they don't have open range to charge what they want and do what they want. So, in this particular instance, I haven't looked up that actual site, so I can't quote you whether that's in there or not, but I just want the public to realize that the subcontractor doesn't have a right to just do what he wants to do and price things the way he wants. We do have, there are limitations to that.
With all due respect, that's exactly what I was supposed to make.
Yeah. Okay, well, I will definitely double check that specific area that you're talking about and make sure we get back to you on that. So we have your contact information.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Last off on citizen input, we have Jeff Art. Jeff, you have a very serious look about you.
Yeah, I drove here from Iowa the last couple days.
Oh, there you go.
Um, prior to that, I found myself, Board of Supervisors meeting, trying to explain from 11,800 B.C. to the present in the context of disenrollments. And what I started to realize is that three minutes is a period of time that is insufficient to receive input from the public unless it's incredibly something. And that most problems, I imagine that come, well, I hope some of the problems come across your desk at our site, but I imagine that a lot of them are fairly complex. So really, I just wanted to say three minutes is insufficient to relate anything with any actual complexity. Thanks.
Next up, we have item number six, which will be our public hearing. And first up, we have item A, which is the solicitation ordinance. And Chief, is that you?
Yes. Mayor, councilmember, members of the public, what's before the council tonight is a public hearing to consider adding ordinance, chapter 524, to the municipal code regarding solicitation. Last month, we presented to the council a draft ordinance and a first reading of this same ordinance, and it's now back for the public hearing. Just to recap why the ordinance was brought forward is that in the past couple of years, within the city, we've had an experience, an increase in aggressive solicitation in numerous different areas of the city, and we did not have a sufficient, any ordinance actually, to deal with those kind of issue, those kind of issues. So we started researching various different draft solicitation ordinances, and we found the one that's before you that was used in another city in California. And with our review and our legal counsel review, we believed it was a reasonable and sensible ordinance to allow the police department to try to deal with the issues when we get complaints about aggressive panhandling and solicitation. We also felt that it was an ordinance that was sound and would not have constitutional issues with it. But essentially, what we're looking at is trying to regulate aggressive panhandling and solicitation. Under the law, it's not illegal to panhandle or ask for money or solicit, but it is against the law to aggressively do that and interfere with the rights of other persons while doing so. So what we wanted to do is try to come up with an ordinance that would allow us to regulate this behavior and clearly outline the aggressive behavior that wouldn't be tolerated, and then do that through a permit process so that persons could be educated on all the rules when they, they applied for the permit to solicit, which would be a free permit to anyone who applied. And, and then the rules would be issued with those permits so they would understand what type of behavior couldn't, couldn't use, essentially. So that's a summary of why we're here. And with that, I'll defer to council for the public hearing and be available to answer questions if they come in.
Thank you, Chief.
Can I ask you a quick question? Chief, would this cover door-to-door sales as well? That type of peddling include...
Yes, there's, there's aspects in the ordinance that would cover any type of solicitation.
Okay.
And that being any kind of a door-to-door sale or a setup somewhere on public or private property asking for money.
Okay, so that's concluded. And then is it restricted to certain hours?
I don't recall was, we have, I don't believe we had any hour restriction on, on this draft ordinance, that I recall.
Was there any other questions? I know Jeff has got a flinch out there, but we'd like to try to keep people, I'm probably the most generous up here, much to the dislike of the long evenings sometimes, but I would like to try to keep the time to close to three minutes if you're going to come up and speak. I'll give you a little bit of leeway, but please try to keep that in mind because there may be a lot of people that would like to speak. At this time, I'll go ahead and open it up, the, the public hearing, and we'll take public comment. Come on up. You can smile at each other and decide who comes up first. Can I go ahead and get you to sign in, too, so we know?
My name is Richard Crowe. And by myself, I'm somewhat homeless. I mean, by some of these volunteer, I have places to stay, but I don't solicit people to say, you know, can I stay on your couch or whatever. I don't sit in front of Safeway to solicit funds because I find it very important for myself to look for work, to hustle for jobs. You know, by the way, I do yard work. Now, I hustle for work. I look for work. I put in applications. I buy shirts, well, not this shirt, but I buy nice clothes at thrift stores for two to five bucks, and I look for work. Just because I'm homeless doesn't mean that I have to solicit your money, your hard-earned money, no matter what you do. I don't like to see it in front of Safeway, and I don't like to see people do that in a harassing way. In fact, I know for a fact, there's a couple people in front of Safeway who I know for at least 20 years who won't look for jobs. So I don't, I don't see why they, you know, they would solicit from you or you or anybody out here. I think there should be a permit. I think if I'm really looking for work and I want to stand in front of Safeway saying, we'll work, then why not get the permit? It says that I'm legit. The police chief could go, yeah, Richard's looking for work, he's going to stand in Safeway, apply by these rules. And I'm going to stand there and go, I do yard work, I will wash your dishes, or whatever, you know, so I can get an income, and hopefully go from homelessness to paying rent like anybody else, you know? And, and some people I do see, I do, they make their living just panhandling, and they won't, you know, clean up and look for work. And I know this for, in fact, one guy harassed me for change. He goes, you got spare change? I'll be really honest, I go, yes, I do. Thank you for asking. I go, get a job, brother. And he goes, why are you so hard? I go, because I have to get a job, and I'm homeless, too. Learn how to play guitar, play some top 10 hits, you know? Earn your right to my spare change. And that's just from a guy who's somewhat homeless, too. And I think it's, I think if you find work, even if it's side stuff or whatever, personally, I find more dignity in it, in myself, because I'm earning my own self-respect by earning, earning cash or whatever I get. So I am for this ordinance, and I thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Nathan Maxon.
Yeah, this one we got a record at Lakeport. Daniel.
Hello. So, I'm not opposed to an ordinance, but I'm opposed to the permit process that is put in place with this ordinance because of how it's laid out. First, it requires a name and address and phone number, which a lot of homeless people don't have. Second, it requires them to state how much they intend to raise and what they intend to raise it, raise the money for. You don't get that when you donate to the Red Cross. You don't know what they're, they're going to use the money for. And I question if the enforcement is going to be even-handed. Are you going to go check, make sure the Girl Scouts have their permits for some cookies? Are you going to check to get some candy door-to-door? Are you going to check with DFW, make sure they have? Or are you just going to go the homeless that are asking for money? The permit part is really the only part of the ordinance that I really don't agree with. I don't have a problem with setting regulations on what the man or girl have to pay. I just don't believe the way the permit process is set up is fair.
I think Nathan left you an extra 23 seconds.
My name is Gary Bunch. I'm a resident and business owner here in Lakeport. I happen to employ more than 45 people. I oppose this ordinance because I think it is a violation of the First Amendment of our Constitution. Panhandling is a form of free speech that is protected by the First Amendment. As annoying as I may find some panhandlers, I support their right to exercise their free speech. I cannot imagine an American... I cannot imagine an America where people have to get a permit to exercise their right to free speech. This ordinance would give police a convenient tool to harass poor people. This is an unnecessary function for them. The police have higher priorities. We have crime in our community that needs to be solved. This is not the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
The proposal to require panhandlers to get a permit, panhandlers to get a permit is unconstitutional in my opinion. We as American citizens are entitled to ask any question at will, but if this ordinance passes, people will have to get the government's permission to ask one particular question. That question being, can you spare some money? Panhandling is objective in our plan, readily identifiable, but you're either doing it or you're not. Aggressive panhandling is completely subjective. And who's gonna determine what or is or isn't aggressive? I've heard the ordinance might be a means for the police to know what panhandlers are out there and to keep tabs on them. It's my opinion that the government has absolutely no right to keep tabs on anybody exercising their constitutional rights. We as American citizens and employers of our government should never make it easier for the police to demand our papers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. You just gotta throw our pencils away. I'm gonna invite you down.
Hello, I'm Pastor Shannon. And I have to begin by saying I read something on Facebook today that was not true. I know that's shocking because I saw it in print, so it must be. But this is what I read on Facebook. I read on Facebook that Pastor Shannon was leading a campaign against the Lakeport City Council. So, I just want to say I actually appreciate you, all of you. Some of you more than others, maybe, not to look at anybody. I appreciate that the chief comes when I call. So, everything that I'm saying, it's not against you. I believe that as leaders in our community, you want the best for our community, as I do. But this ordinance concerns me deeply. The primary reason I'm concerned about this ordinance is because I think it's targeted toward our homeless population. It's really not about panhandling. Penal Code, California State Penal Code 647(c) gives you the authority to ticket, to deal legally with aggressive panhandlers. My concern is that this will not be done fairly across the board. As Nathan, I'm concerned that there is a permit process that is simply beyond the capacity of many of our homeless neighbors to achieve, whether it is providing ID, putting a phone number, an address, or the two-week waiting notice between the application time and the administration of the permit. But my biggest, my biggest concern about this ordinance is that what's coming out, as I look at the comments people are making about it, is it is centering on homelessness. It is. But what they're saying is we have a problem because we can see homeless people in our community. And I think we have a homeless problem because we have unsheltered neighbors in our community. And those are very different things. And this ordinance won't do anything to help our community come together in a creative, innovative way to address the needs of all of our residents. So, I'm not at all against some kind of ordinance regarding aggressive panhandling. I don't think it's necessary, only because there are laws on the books, but I'm really concerned about this particular ordinance. That's why I'm here tonight. And having said that, I still appreciate all of you. Thank you. I'll sign my name.
I didn't even hear the Facebook rumors.
Well, you know, there were like 300 comments on it as of today. And the top one was that I was leading a campaign against you. And I'm not leading a campaign against you. I think that being a public servant or a pastor, anybody that has more than 100 bosses, that's hard work. It is. It's just hard work. And I know that it's hard work. But I am, I am against this ordinance. That is true. And I thank you for your thoughtful consideration of it.
Thank you, Pastor Shannon. And I'd like to, I know we got some, come on, keep coming up. I just wanted to thank Public. You're being very courteous with your time, and I just, we appreciate that and your comments.
My name is Taylor Johnson. I worked with Pastor Shannon this winter. I am also against the ordinance. I think it is well-intentioned. Nobody wants aggressive panhandling. But again, those laws are on the books, and it is not technically against the law to panhandle it. I think the one, the ordinance that is proposed right now will only encourage homeless individuals to hide. And I think that that is a real hindrance to the work that we are trying to do, which is connect homeless individuals to services, identify them in our community so that we can actually do what needs to be done. And unfortunately for us, it's a little more difficult because we are a rural community. And most of the way, most of the way you think about homelessness is in an urban context, and it doesn't manifest its way the same way when you're in a rural context. And so, it's much harder to find people, it's much harder to identify, or to get a real sense of how many homeless people you have in a community when they're constantly hiding or they're couch-surfing or they're sleeping in their cars. And I think that this will only encourage more of them to do that because what will end up happening, and it may not have been the intent, but what will end up happening is it will cause a very hostile environment for the homeless people in public areas. And when you cause that hostile environment, then they just tend to hide. So, that's one of the reasons that I'm against the ordinance. But I've also heard that a lot of people, the things that are going around is that we've had such an increase in homeless individuals, but that's just California. Like, honestly, people are transient, they move, like, that's just natural. People move. People like to live in California for a lot of reasons. I know my parents lived out here because the weather was great. And therefore, California bears a higher proportion of the homeless population in the country. We house, or are home to about 25% of homeless individuals in the country. So, clearly, a quarter of them already live here or are choosing to come here. This is not something that's gonna go away. We can't just keep passing things that will hide them because then that does exactly raise the problem. The more that they hide, the less that we can actually do proactive things instead of reactive things. So, that is why I'm against the ordinance.
Taylor, would you, would you agree also that there seems to be a service deficit?
Yes, absolutely.
Is one of the issues.
Things that we're trying to address. But absolutely, and we've had meetings, we actually just had a meeting last week with a clerk from the Senator Maguire's office about that situation. So, yes, absolutely, there is a lack of services. So, definitely, but the goal is to get those services, but also, once we have those services or can actually access those services, to be able to identify the people who need them.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Markham, and you may tell me to shut up anytime you want. I'm kinda interested. This is something I feel passionate about. I spent my entire life in law enforcement. I have come in contact with what we would call homeless over 36 years. And quite honestly, I'll tell you that I found him difficult to deal with. I felt sorry for him, but again, I didn't necessarily want him in my communities. I worked in the warming shelter all summer, well, not every day, when our church had time to do it, and I learned a lot. Everybody should have the same time. I don't really understand why we're creating an ordinance when there are fewer code sections of the covenant. My true fear of the reason of the ordinance is you want somebody to fill out an application. I'm quite capable of filling out an application, as all of you are. If I wanted to fill out an application for that, would I need an address? That's a question.
No, if you're a transient or homeless.
So, the word transient on the permit, it suffices to get a permit?
Well, we have not, we haven't actually come up with a permanent language. If this ordinance is passed, then we'll figure, we'll work on the permit, but if you don't have an address, you're, it's homeless, or you don't have an address, or transient.
Well, I don't think the time to come up with the answers is after the permit is passed. What I see is, is it's an attempt to say, I want you to fill this out. You don't have all rights of everybody to do what you, to do what this ordinance describes. But if later it says, we need an address, okay, my name is Jeff Markham, I don't have an address, we need an address. So then what am I, do you take them to church to use this address? I mean, that's not being truthful. I can't do that. So, I have a real question. I think this is a way of controlling people thinking bad or seeing bad in people who were sitting down asking for food. One thing I'd like to know, it was said that there were many complaints. Are there any documented case files, case numbers of people being aggressive when asking for money?
We've got, yeah, we've got numerous calls on aggressive behavior.
Not calls, are there any documented?
I would have to research that, Jeff, to see if there's been any arrests or reports on it. But we do have call logs regarding those calls.
The penalties seem very stiff. I mean, I didn't really read it, I read it really fast today. A year in jail, $1,000 fine. I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous, that a homeless person would have an indiscretion and then go to jail for a year. Actually, they might get three squares and stuff. But that seems really, I'm trying to hurry my part here. Since this has come up, I've researched homelessness and I've researched many cities and counties. Many are, many are doing a great job. Three I can name that I've read about, Sacramento, Seattle, and Sonoma. They're trying to set up housing, they're taking an aggressive stance at it. I know that that is probably a debatable subject to many people. I understand that. In addition to that, they're doing a lot of outreach programs. There are also cities that are doing exactly what you're doing. I read it in the paper the other day, I'm sorry, I can't tell you what city, might be San Francisco. It says, well, the people are no longer down with the terrorists though. That's what this is really about. This is about moving those people around. That's what I feel this is about. But those people who are doing these ordinances are doing outreach, outreach with social workers, outreach with medical personnel. And I just see Lakeport saying, you know, this is how we want it, this is where we want you to be. And what's gonna go on? Okay, I tried to cut it really short for you guys, and all I can tell you is, I'm really an old geezer, and back in my young days in law enforcement, they had a term for such action called whitelining. And whenever you had somebody that was creating problems, much like Sonoma County, except that young lady, the Oklahoman who lived with her mother, counties would take people and next white line. You can tell I do a close. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, can I just briefly respond a little to that question? So, the violations under the ordinance are the general penalties that the code provides for?
I'm sorry, I'm here to...
Provides for the general penalty of the municipal code, so that is a fine of up to $1,000, or imprisonment six months or less than six months. So, that would be the maximum that would be possible for the DA to actually take a case. However, there are also administrative remedies that the city has under its code which allow for simple fines or the officer to cite a person based on that.
Do you want me to come back up?
No, I'm just responding to the question.
I understand that, but even a simple fine, if they don't have money to buy sandwiches, because I provide sandwiches, I don't provide money.
Jeff, I, I kinda need to, either have you come back up real briefly or...
Well, I was happy going back.
No, no, that's fine. I think he was trying to give you a little bit of...
I couldn't hear he was talking. And I apologize for not being dressed up, I just had surgery today, otherwise I'd be...
That's all right, I'm not wearing any pants. Nobody can tell us.
Okay, I guess, your statement is well-taken, but if they can't buy a $4.50 sandwich, then how are they gonna pay for, I don't know, $15 fine, $30 fine, $20 fine? That's my point.
Thank you, Jeff.
And the other point was about the addresses, and I think the chief addressed that, which is that the ordinance under 52405OB, it says that if the applicant is unable to provide any of the information, they just need to explain the reasons why they can't provide it, and that's it.
Yeah, that was actually gonna be one of my biggest questions. I wanted to make sure that they could get the application if they did not have...
They just have to articulate the reasons why.
Okay, that's fine. Take a little comfort in that, Jeff. You were so patient, yo-yoed up and you yo-yoed there.
Well, most has been said and said very well.
Yes.
My name's Meg Harper, and I'm against the ordinance. I question also what Jeff said, how many arrests have been done? You don't really have any facts on those. I believe probably people have complained because people don't like to look at it. It's uncomfortable. But it is part of our, those are our neighbors, as Shannon put it. I've never been aggressively asked or forced, but they're usually very polite. So, I really question about what kind of problem it really is, or is it just something people don't want to see? And I think that we need to address it in a different way, not try to make them hide, not try to, some of these people probably filling out an application is very hard for them. So, I think we're creating more of a mess. Anyway, I think that I pretty much, everybody covered what I'm concerned about. I think we need to address this issue in a different way, not by making them fill out paperwork. But then they have 10 days or seven days, but they have no address to find out. You can't contact them and say, sorry, we've denied your permit. How are we gonna contact them and say we denied your permit? It seems kind of ridiculous, the whole process. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nathan.
Sure, you are rocking a serious tie there. I oppose the ordinance on a couple of basic areas. Five denominations, starting January 4, opened a warming center instead of having a church. We operated for 12 weeks in stellar, it didn't cost the county a dime. And yet, we had an event at the very end which was misrepresented, and that's all people talk about now, is that there was a stabbing. And there's already talk about trying to find a permitting process so that we can't do it again. These things disturb me because it seems as though there's a desire to just, we don't want to see you. If you're homeless, we don't want to know you're there. We don't, we just don't want to see you because you, it bothers us. And I'll be honest with you, it bothers me to drive out of Safeway or to walk along the sidewalk and see people on every corner. And my first reaction was, you know, you're in competition with 1,200 people that lost their homes in the fire. So, you know, get in line. But at the same time, these people have problems. There are other people who are homeless by no choice of their own. There are some people who are homeless because they choose to be homeless. There are mental health care issues. There's a continuum of care that the county and the cities have got to come up with so that this is not just a scattershot where we try to control what we see and don't see, and what behaviors happen and don't happen, but where we actually get to the root of some of these things and help these people that have problems address their problems. We did have one couple that stayed at the shelter, and eventually they, actually, two couples. One found a home, they bought a home in Tennessee and moved. Another couple found a job, a surveyor job, got a home here in Lakeport, they're productive citizens. It wasn't just something that didn't work, it worked very, very well. And I would encourage the city council not to put impediments forward that punish people who are homeless, but find ways to help them and to deal with the issue. I, you know, nobody wants it in my neighborhood, nobody wants a warming...
I, you know, nobody wants it in my neighborhood, nobody wants a warming center in my neighborhood, I don't want a juvenile hall in my neighborhood, because I don't want to see that, I don't want to have to deal with it. But it's here, and we have to deal with it, and I don't think the ordinance really is the answer, and you've already heard about the permitting process, which, that issue of permit without an address, even the post office won't let you have a post office box without some sort of an address. So I don't know how that would work, it seems a little bit odd how it would be enforceable and how we're doing. And how do you, again, how do you pay a fine if you don't have a job? How do you take a shower? And we did that at the church, we let them have showers, we let them have something to eat. How do you have an entry level job which won't even allow you to get entry level apartment locally here, and at McDonald's, and be able to stay clean enough and nicely dressed enough to hold on to your job? How do you do that when you're homeless? And so we've got to deal with this on a far bigger, deeper, and higher level than we're doing with it, and I don't think the permit process really takes care of the problem, I think it exacerbates it.
Sir, I know you signed in, can I get your name?
Pastor Randy Brown, I'm with the Seventh Adventist Church up on Park and Hill.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. I should have known that, I'm probably going to go to hell now. Can I say that?
No.
Oh.
I'm here to talk to you all about how I feel in my heart about this. So this is not highfalutin stuff, but I think our city is much better than this ordinance-
Can you pull the microphone down just a hair? Thank you, perfect.
Thanks, Mark. I always forget to do that. I think the city has got a lot of really dedicated people in it, and it's, it's a fantastic city to live in. I know the police department is generous and good and kind to people, and this sets a tone of total discrimination. It's class discrimination against poor people for whatever reason they're poor. It could be they have learning disabilities and never learned to read. We all suffered financially just a few years ago tremendously, and some people did not recover from that. Now, if you've studied homeless people, when you've been out there for a while, your morale sinks till you don't believe that you have any right for anything. And this does not solve the problem. We are not a destitute city. We are doing this beautiful beautification project when we still need sidewalks for our old people to walk on, like my 89-year-old mother. We have every ability to come up with a way to solve this homeless problem with grace and beauty. To ask someone for an address is demeaning when they're homeless and they're there because they need to ask people for some food, some money to eat. I don't give out money, I buy food for people. And that's where most people are at, and that's the same thing you would all do. I am sure Kenneth would do that. So everything about this particular ordinance lies in the face of doing for others what you want them to do for you, and I strongly object to it. If we need something, it can be created in a different way. Maybe we need another public hearing that would show us what the application form looked like, so we could be assured. But I just really have to say from the bottom of my heart, we do not want our city going in this direction, because this is not acceptable. It's not acceptable to do that to our neighbors even if they're not in a house case to us, and they're not acceptable in the sight of God. Thank you for your time.
Can I get your name also?
Yeah, I'm Mary Kay Howland.
Okay.
Your friends will ruin it forever.
I know.
Did I forget to say that?
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I wrote it down.
Okay.
So it's here.
Hello. I'm Janie Markham. I really would like to know what the purpose of this ordinance is. If we all know or can accept or can assume that if a, an officer hands out a citation to a person, homeless or not, who is soliciting funds, let's say they're homeless, we know they're not going to have the $30, the $50 bucks to pay the, the fine. So you're not going to get your money. I, I don't understand the purpose of it. If we already have a law on the books in the state of California which prevents aggressive panhandling, then why are we doing this? I really, really don't understand that. It can't be for the, the motivation of getting money, because you're not going to get it. Then you put them in jail, you're three hots in a cot, that costs us money. In addition to being disrespectful to them, I don't understand, I'm, I'm trying to guess what the purpose of it is. And if the purpose is to teach them or educate them to what it is, is acceptable panhandling and what is not, then Camp Jason or all the other officers hand out a sheet of paper to them when they see them in front of, sitting in front of Safeway and say, "Here's what this paper says. You may do this, you may do that, you may not do this, this, and this. And if you do, then I will be back." Excuse me, "I will be back." If that's the purpose of this ordinance, we can solve it without getting an ordinance. I can't think of another reason why we're doing this. I, I really can't, it seems.
Chief, do you want to touch on that again while she's up here?
I will.
Well, I, okay, you want to go?
Go ahead. I will definitely take the opportunity. I thank you for everybody's comments. I do want to address a couple of things also that Jeff said, as well as Meg, and as well as you. Let me first state that I'm going to defend my police department because I want you to know we deal with a lot of these calls, and I know that you're looking for statistics. A lot of these calls we get are on private property and Safeway. There isn't a whole lot that we can do when it comes to that. So yes, we get a lot of calls, yes, there are people that are complaining about being aggressively solicited. So when you say, you know, "Show me the stats," I can assure you we're getting the calls. A lot of my officers respond to these. The ordinance is designed to regulate aggressive solicitation. We have a problem with aggressive solicitation. If you read on the back of page five, you'll see some of the sections under 5.24.110. We do have some of these problems that fall into these categories under D, E, F, G, and H.
Could you read those?
Do not. Yeah.
It's from the draft ordinance.
You have a draft ordinance?
The draft ordinance. Page five of the city ordinance, draft city ordinance.
I don't think we have it.
Okay. I'll finish real quick, and if you need me to read it, I will. Is that okay? Okay. I want to make a comment to what Jeff said, and I applaud Jeff for the many, many years that he's served in law enforcement, I know Jeff quite well. There's one thing I'm very confident of, that we're dealing with the homeless population much larger, I'm fully confident than you probably ever saw. It's a very big, significant issue that we deal with. I completely understand where people feel the way they feel about this and whether or not there's better services, but as it comes to our public safety and the right for the citizens to be free to go shop without being, you know, constantly solicited or aggressively solicited, this is where generally the ordinance comes from, is to try to regulate this and try to allow those citizens the ability to go to the shopping mall, go to the store without having this happen. I want to make a comment about the fines. They don't necessarily equate to every single person getting a fine every time. The ideal, if somebody is aggressively soliciting somebody, potentially, yes, they could get a fine, but if a person who's a permit doesn't aggressively cause any problem, doesn't have any issue, they're not going to get a fine. There's not going to be any fee associated to that for them. And I think the city attorney David mentioned that if the person's able to reasonably articulate why they don't have an address, why they don't have an ID, then that does not mean they do not get a permit. They're certainly still able to get that permit, and it's likely that that person isn't going to go out and cause a problem. Really, where you may have a fine, where you may have an issue, is if the person aggressively solicits somebody in a store and law enforcement is called.
In a store?
No, I mean aggressively solicits somebody around Safeway and around Kmart where, and law enforcement gets called. That's potentially where you could have a citation issued over that for aggressive solicitation.
So the laws on the state codes don't cover that right now?
There are certain things we have to be careful of because it's private property. There are certain things where it's misdemeanor not committed in our presence, and whether or not we have the ability to just walk up and arrest somebody, we have laws we have to adhere to too.
So you're saying that's not on, in state law? You're trying to write something in addition to-
I can address that a little bit when you're done.
Well, you can go ahead and answer, she's asking you that now if you want.
Okay, good. So I am aware of California Penal Code Section 647(c), but just because we have a penal code section doesn't mean necessarily that we can use that to solve this kind of an issue. In my opinion, we're better off having our own ordinance which outlines what the rules are, and then we also have the ability to administratively enforce it rather than just enforce it criminally. So on, on the Section 647(c), that would be a misdemeanor violation that we would have to get the district attorney to file charges on somebody. We're, you know, we're not out here to try to, to fine people or, or get people charged. The idea of this thing is to regulate the aggressive panhandling, to try to make sure that, you know, the free rights of the, the people that are going to ask for money without aggressively panhandling can balance out with the other people's ability to go out of that and do their business. So, you know, we've got, in this, I'm also hearing a lot about homelessness, and I appreciate everybody's comments, and I totally agree, we have a serious issue that needs to be solved, that, you know, the, the government and the community is going to have to come together and work together, or we're never going to solve it, ever. So, but this, this ordinance is, is not brought here to try to deal with, necessarily, you know, solve homeless issue or deal with that. We're just trying to regulate the aggressive behavior that is causing many of our business owners to call us constantly, many citizens to call us and complain about being approached and contacted aggressively, which also includes stepping out into traffic. And I can say that, you know, probably the majority of the aggressive panhandlers that I have personally responded to calls on are not homeless, they have homes. I just interviewed a couple of people last week that we had calls on at Safeway that were aggressively panhandling, they were being verbally abusive to the business owner, they were stepping out in the roadway. I went down to the call myself with one of my officers, I interviewed them, not homeless, they have homes in Lake County, and they also have incomes. They were out there panhandling to try to, you know, make extra money. So those folks aren't homeless. And then there's also other issues we deal with, with some of the door-to-door soliciting. We have less than credible companies from out of state that they come into California and they, I've personally seen them in the city of Lakeport, they'll bring two van loads of people in and they'll aggressively go house to house trying to sell products, and they have business licenses that are suspended, that they're on watch lists for, for different states, and they're aggressively contacting our citizens, so this will also seek to regulate that as well. So-
So when you say regulate, you're really talking about education and informing them of what's-
Well, I'm saying regulate to, to have an ability to stop the aggressive nature of the panhandling. So whether I give them a ticket or not, I can, I can tell them that they need to move on and stop that behavior, that they're in violation of the city ordinance or state law or whatever the case may be. I can say, you know, "This is the report we got, interview them," or "It's our own observations," and we can, we can get, tell them that they need to move on. You know, in law enforcement, we don't necessarily arrest or cite everybody. Sometimes there's many, many warnings on even criminal violations and not just, just infractions. So that's, you know, my belief on, on why we need a city ordinance in addition to any state laws. And, but just the last point was, you know, Mr. Munch had mentioned that it's, you know, panhandling is a form of free, free, uh, free speech, excuse me, and that's absolutely true. It is free speech, and we're, we're not trying to, to interfere with that at all, we just want to regulate the aggressive behavior.
Chief, maybe I can help clarify a little bit. When somebody performs a shoplifting act, which is a misdemeanor, it's not in your presence, then they have to be placed under citizen's arrest in order for any law enforcement officer to take any action. That's correct. Right. And so what, basically, anytime that goes on, you have to get a complaint from the manager or the business owner or whatever. So this just circumvents that, so you can go directly to the person who is harassing and affecting normal, everyday citizens, and gives you a tool to do what you should be able to do if someone were willing to come out and they're not too busy, to put them under citizen's arrest and give you a statement, right?
Yes, if, if we handle this, especially if we, if the officer handled the investigation in an administrative capacity as far as dealing with the ordinance administratively, then we can take action to either stop the behavior or issue a citation without actually seeing the violation.
And that's why if Section 647(c) is ineffective for you, because you have to have, misdemeanor has to be someone placed under citizen's arrest because it's not in the presence of an officer.
That's one of the hindrances, yes. There, I see other issues with trying to rely on state law as well, but that is a good point, that is one of the, the concerns, that we couldn't even send it to the DA unless we had a solid citizen statement or citizen's arrest.
Pastor Shannon, before you come up-
I just have one question.
I just want to make sure that, Janie, you, I know we've kind of launched into a discussion there while you were up here, did you get to finish?
Yes, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
My question is, if, if the ordinance is truly to deal with those behaviors, then have the ordinance address only those behaviors, not the permitting, not peaceable panhandling, but only those aggressive pieces? I mean, is there a reason that you can't have an ordinance that is just C through K? The, the parts that are actually aggressive, touch, persistently, intentionally threatening, misrepresenting? I mean, if, if that is the, if that is the intent of the ordinance, then have the ordinance address only those things, rather than these extra steps of saying that to exhibit or to engage in free speech you need a permit, or in order to panhandle you need a permit. Just address the, the specific actions that you are saying are the issue. And, and that would, that would solve my objection. I, I mean, truly, if, if that's all that you want to do, then, then write the ordinance to address those things, not including these other things. That, that's my concern.
Okay, follow.
Thanks. That's what I was trying to inadequately say, is this is too broad and too dangerous. This can be misused enormously, and we are not that kind of people. So I completely agree with Pastor Shannon, and I think everybody else does here. We have a problem, we need to solve it, but this is not okay. So if we could redo it, I mean, we, we, we don't want to stand in the way of protecting people from somebody aggressive. That's not the issue at all. It's just that this has the ability to be so discriminatory against, you know, poor people, that we don't want to go that direction. Thank you.
Can we get a couple of the people first that haven't come up? I'm sorry, I'll get you, I-
I have a real simple thing. All right. What I hear is I hear that-
Can I get you the same name? I don't know.
I know that, I hear that you want them to move on, the people that are a problem. Where do we move them on to?
Do you state your name for the clerk, please?
Joe Gossett is my name. All right. I, I see the problem. I personally give out food also, I don't give out money. But the problem- But the problem is, they don't have a safe space to go to. They don't have any corner of the world where they can go jive out. And we want them to move on, and the only thing I'm getting from this is, I'm getting the feeling that you want to move them to the other side of the county.
That's not what I was saying, ma'am. I probably didn't use the right words when I made that statement, but...
No, no, I was just wondering.
You're talking about, that I said something about them moving on. What I meant was that if someone was aggressively violating or causing a problem, that we have the authority to say, "You need to stop this. You need to leave the location." Not necessarily, I'm not saying they need to move on to another community or anything like that, just that we can deal with the situation at the time.
Is it possible you could set up one place and you could say, "This is a panhandling zone?" And they could all go there, and then you could have them manage the whole area, and then you could keep track of them?
Well, I don't know that that would be the best way to deal with the issue that we have right now. Certainly, anything can be considered, but like I mentioned earlier, we looked at some other ordinances, and we just felt that this ordinance was the most reasonable for all sides, and that it didn't prevent people from the need to panhandle because they're homeless from doing that.
And the other thing is, if we're waiting for the feds and the state and the county to get it together, we could go walk off the short pier. I mean, they're not going to get it together. They're leaving it. Obviously, they're ignoring the problem and leaving it to us.
Well, as far as the homeless issue goes, that's why I said the community needs to work with local government to try to solve that issue, I believe.
Well, I think that working together would be much... I still will remind everybody that we did have the OK School to California in the Dust Bowl, and that California handled it. In fact, they did a series on it on PBS on how well they handled it. So maybe we need to take some, maybe we need some history lessons to see how we can do it better. I don't know. That's just a suggestion.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak?
There's one here.
Okay. We can just catch whoever hasn't spoken yet, and if a couple want to come back up, then we'll catch you there.
Yeah, my name is James Kuzick.
Okay, James?
I've been homeless, I am homeless right now. I'm trying to get my social security, and I know what the homeless have gone through out here on the streets of Lakeport for the past three and a half years. And it's not an easy thing, because you know what? They've been chasing me around, saying that I can't do it in this parking lot, I can't do it in that parking lot, I can't... I'm looking at them, where do I go? I have nowhere to go. I have no income. I have nothing. I'm disabled, I have no income, I have nothing. Where do you want me to go? They chase me away from this Safeway. I was rolled up for playing the guitar there. For playing the guitar in the Safeway parking lot I was rolled up. And city jail for waiting for the bus. They told me if I was there in the parking lot too long that I was loitering, just because of my appearance, they knew that I was homeless. And I didn't have a place to go and take a shower, or go to a refrigerator, or do anything like that. They wrote me out and put me in jail. And that's, that's all I got to say about that number. I oppose it big time, you know, because it's against our constitution. You know, you don't have the right to be somewhere and be just like a citizen. But when they do a grocery store, and out of a grocery store, waiting at a bus stop or whatever you're doing, then you're taking away the freedom of just the homeless if you're going to categorize them as being homeless like that and say you're here too long, you're loitering. I oppose.
Thank you, James.
I mean, yeah.
Hi, I don't have too much time. About 15 years ago, I, excuse me, was driving to work for about a two-week period, and I noticed, it was early, early in the morning, really dark, probably about five thirty or so, and these two ladies were walking their dog. It did different parts in the road, but they were walking their dog in the middle of the road. Coming around corners, or over those, or whatever. And a couple of times, you know, I almost hit them, or the ladies, almost hit their dog. The third time that I came close to hitting somebody, I called the police department, and I said, "There are these ladies who walk their dog in these streets every morning in the middle of the road, and they're going to get hit." And the response from the police officer was, "For me to augment my behavior, take a different route to work in the morning." I'm going to say the same thing. If you're walking out of Safeway, I mean, that's the citizens. If we're walking out of Safeway, if I walk out, and I know that I'm going to be bothered by a solicitor to my right, I'm going to take a left. That's my responsibility, to protect myself from being harassed, also to respect the solicitor's right to free speech. That just makes sense to me. I think if more people said no, meant no, stood their ground, didn't give anything, and let the less unfortunate utilize services that are available rather than panhandle. If it kept saying no, stood their ground, meant didn't give, I think we'd see a change. But we need to stand our ground. We need to change our own behavior, rather than try to dictate what somebody else can say and what somebody else can't say. That's kind of my issue with the whole thing. Again, thanks for your time.
Okay. Is that Richard?
Yes.
Okay, Richard, come on up.
I just thought of the permit or ordinance like this. I know it's maybe not the same, but maybe it's similar to having a driver's license. Come on, I have a driver's license, I have to sign up. But if I go out in Lakeport, and I'm drinking and driving, he pulls me over, I'm going to jail. Now they're going to know, "Hey, let's keep an eye on Richard, because he likes to drink and drive a lot." You know? If I speed through town, you know, now they know that I like to speed, I like to drink and drive, and it'd be the same thing. I'm taking my, because it's not a right, my privilege to drive and abuse it. So I figured the ordinance or the permit will state that, okay, here's Richard Brown, and he wants to panhandle for a job, or he wants to claim his job as panhandling. And then all of a sudden, they have a record that says, "Okay, he's a good guy. He's not harassing nobody. Go ahead, remain there." But now the police are getting reports that I'm harassing people, following people to their cars. I know a guy stole my friend's cellphone, and I confronted him, and the guy was just verbally abusive to me. So I took a sign, and I said, "This is my sign," and walked away, and then he got, because he walked out. I go, the thing is, is if I take that, and all of a sudden I'm aggressive, now these police officers know that I'm aggressive with my panhandling, and they know to keep an eye on that, or at least remind me going, "Hey, you signed your agreement, this permit, that you will not be aggressive." That's why I'm still, you know, like I said, I'm homeless. Because of charity of good friends, I have places to stay, to store my clothes and stuff, so I'm very fortunate. But I look for work, and the thing is, if I'm really looking for work, I figure an ordinance would just say, yes, I'm legit about my intention of what I'm doing. It may not be the same of having a driver's license, but it's kind of similar to it. If I abuse my privilege, then I shouldn't have the right to do it. Simple things.
Thank you, Richard. Is there anyone else, just before I call you up, is there anyone else that has not spoke that would like to speak? Okay.
My name is Frank Delosso.
Hey, Frank.
I lived here in Lake County my whole life, and live here in the city of Lakeport. And I just want to say that I'm in favor of the permitting process. I think that, I believe that we have great people here in our city. I believe that our police department, I've told people, years after year after year, you have to be an idiot to be pulled over in the city of Lakeport. You have to be doing something absolutely stupid. And I don't think that our police department is out to get anybody. But I do think that it will, it will bring people just like any business owner or anything that has to have a business license to operate in the city of Lakeport, to be able to do things responsibly. And whether the fines, you know, you think, well, how is someone going to pay the fine? You know, I don't know. I think there's ways, you know, community service here in the city of Lakeport. And, you know, and I'm not, you know, I love, I love everybody, you know, and I'm not against, and I really believe that we need some tools in our city and in our county to help people that need help. I've put up homeless people myself. I've actually bought them rooms and hotel rooms. I've even bought gym memberships for them, so they can go down and get a shower every day while running. And so, you know, so I'm not against that at all, but I do know, and I have experienced myself some aggressive solicitations, and I've known, I know several people that have this well. And I think this would be a good tool for our local police department to use. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Do you want to come up? Sorry, I'm getting there.
My name is Frances Markowitz. I've lived in Lakeport about a year and a half now. And 15 years ago, I worked in San Francisco. I committed for Renner Park to San Francisco on the bus. That was a fascinating experience. And I did experience quite a bit of panhandling. And one incident I would call aggressive. And I have to say, nothing even vaguely approaching that, as it happened to me here. And I've been out of Safeway Shopping Center almost daily basis. So I think you might want to cut and paste San Francisco's anti-panhandling or aggressive panhandling ordinance, because they did have to do something about that. A lot of these same issues came up. I'm against this permitting process. I don't think that's an answer at all. And I think it is very discriminatory. It defines a class of sort of undesirable people that can kind of go down the, you know, the jail railroad, you know? I don't like that at all. However, we do need to make clear what is undesirable, unacceptable, and harassing or unpleasant behavior. People do need to be able to shop or do whatever they do in a public space without feeling threatened or what have you. So make it really clear what's okay and what is not. We all, most of us know that stealing is not okay, okay? What constitutes aggressive panhandling? What constitutes loitering? You know, post a sign if you have to. The other thing is, private property owners have every right to ban people or activities. Costco, Target in Renner Park, they ban any kind of solicitation, including people soliciting, getting a sign for valid initiatives, selling Girl Scout cookies, anything of that nature, any kind of political demonstration or anything of that nature. You know, that does put a bit of a cramp on free speech, but it does make your shopping experience a whole lot unpleasant. So I am kind of a bit confused as to why the private property owner can't say, "This is not allowed on our property. You know, you will not engage in this conduct on our property." Now, if somebody is harassing a shopper or something of that nature, do they have every right, the manager can just, as if somebody was shoplifting or doing something else that was suspicious or causing a problem, they have every right to detain that person, call the police, and have the police take care of it? So if you need to maybe, I don't know, I don't like putting up a sign, but maybe you need to put up a sign, you know? This is okay, this is not. So make this very, very clear. But I just think this ordinance is, or this permit is, just doesn't make any sense at all. And I think there's a better way to handle this issue. Thank you.
Was it Kirsten?
Yes.
Thank you, Kirsten.
David, did you, are you going to wait to respond? I know you probably...
Yeah.
Oh. Running out of room on the sign initiative. Put a line down. Yeah, twice as much.
All right. My name is Jeff Adi. I live at 40111th Street, Lakeport, California, 95453. Somebody was supposed to come tonight and talk to you about precedents set with other cases that are similar in other cities, and they did not make it here. And I really don't want to talk about what I don't have expertise in. But I will say, in 1993, the city of Berkeley tried to do this, and it took them until 2013 to pull it off, and it cost them a few million dollars to do it. And it's really unenforceable there, because you just have to have police everywhere all the time in order for that to work. In Berkeley, it's a little different here, but it did cost a couple of million dollars. So first, I was wondering something. I'm wondering if any of you have ever not had a place to live? Anybody? No? Okay. Here, here, back here. I know you have, and you know what's important, though, is you don't have to have a right, James?
Can we, can we?
James, you don't have to have a right to exist. Your existence is a fact.
Yeah? We have to kind of keep it dry in appearance.
Okay. So none of you have ever been homeless? So the next question is, in the process of putting this thing together, I would like to know exactly how many homeless people you consulted? None or more than none, or what?
We did not have any kind of a public input on this before we brought it forward.
Gotcha. So to me, it seems like what we have is a broad, vast social problem that probably has a lot more to do with the crisis of 2008 and on subsequent to fires last summer than anything else. And for some reason, I'm not really quite sure why we're inclined to make an economic and health issue into a law enforcement issue. And I think why a lot of people are like coming up going, "This doesn't quite make sense," is that we're trying to screw things in with a hammer. So I'm going to try and, man, some of the 11 years I spent outside in 30 seconds, what I learned living outside for 11 years is that probably 99.9% of people who live outside are the victims of long series of horrendous crimes that were never dealt with at all. And that you really owe it to yourself and to the people that you serve to ask yourself, "Do I want to be..." You have one more person who abuses them. It's a little different since 2008. Prior to 2008, one-third of homeless people in America were veterans, one-third were women and children fleeing from domestic violence, and the other third were a mismatch of gay kids who had to run away and people who, you know, built cars and then the industry collapsed.
I don't want to push you, but you're running on about seven or eight minutes.
Okay. So I also needed to answer, some people panhandle and don't look for work because they're on permanent disability and they can't look for work. If this passes, the most significant consequence of it is 182 whatever days in county jail. And that tab is not covered exclusively by the city of Lakeport, is it?
No, sir.
It's picked up by the county. And I think also, the council owes it to the entire county to make decisions like this as a county, because the county's going to pick up the tab. I worked in the county jail for four months as a nurse practitioner until March, like December until March. And what I found is, is, you know, A, it costs $20,000 for six months of the average person, but when you have a concentration of health problems because you're dealing with a population that's homeless...
I push you a little bit.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
It's going to be more expensive than $20,000.
I'm being really, really patient with you.
Okay. So the bigger ones are this. Nothing in the ordinance says anything about what a person who does not live in our reality does about the permitting process. When someone is untreated and not under court order... When someone is untreated and not under court order to be treated for schizophrenia, how exactly are they supposed to negotiate the permitting process? And if they can't do that, that's a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act. With the exception of the prohibition of establishing religion, this ordinance violates every clause in the First Amendment, and it violates the Health Insurance Portability and Privacy Act. It says, if you're faking an illness, I would like to know exactly how do we find out if somebody's illness is fake?
Jeff, 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 I kind of cut you off a little bit. Please. I'm asking nicely. I know you have a lot to say, but you're running probably out about 10 minutes there. Please. Thank you.
Okay, now I was missing the most important thing. I'm, I'm quite confident the mayor is stopping this. There's other people that may want to speak.
They do.
And they will speak.
Okay.
Because when we all go to work.
We need to.
Go and tell our boss, we're done, we're leaving. So, the very last thing I have to say is this. I am a minister of the Universal Life Church, and if government gets in the way of me giving alms to the poor, you have infringed on my freedom of religion, irrespective of speech. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone that has not spoken yet that would like to come up and speak? Okay?
Go ahead and sign in again.
No.
Make them, right? Yes. So, first, to the speaker before who equated speech to driving kind of apples and oranges, ones are right, ones are privileged, but I wanted to point out, some of the most aggressive people I've dealt with have been signature gatherers, which I understand the ordinance doesn't deal with, but those have been the most aggressive people to deal with. And the Girl Scouts, really actually, I like Girl Scout cookies. It's hard to walk past the table. It, it's hard. But my one question is for you guys is, what is the necessity of a permit? Why can't it just be, these are the acceptable way, this is what's acceptable, this is what is not, and have that be the ordinance? Is there a reason that there has to be the permitting process?
Well, in my opinion, it's, it benefits everybody because they have an opportunity to be educated on the rules of this when they're, they're going out to conduct that type of solicitation.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, can you? Gary, right?
Gary.
Come on, Gary.
Trying to not be so nervous.
That's all right. You did just fine.
Part of my problem with constitutional amendment, or the First Amendment, is this. My business provides community integration services to people with cognitive and physical Sometimes the people we serve lose control. Sometimes they become agitated. Sometimes they become aggressive. And sometimes they even become assaultive. At times like that, I really appreciate the police department and their support of my employees in the community in dealing with these crisis situations. I am required to be, and I am certified, as a professional assault crisis trainer. I don't allow my employees to use terms like aggressive. Aggressive is a term that means something different to everyone that hears the term. We train our employees to identify what is assault, what is simple assault, what is simple assault and battering, and what is aggravated assault. This is part of the training we provide to our employees. We're required to provide that training to our employees. So, when I hear a term like aggressive panhandling, what I think of is someone who is being annoying, someone who is talking loud to me, someone who may be cussing at me, somebody who may be in some state of agitation towards me because I have chosen not to respond to them or to decline their request for funds or joining their church or anything else. And aggressive panhandling to me is a term that kind of connotates with being annoying. I think we have a constitutional right. I teach my employees that our clients have a constitutional right to be annoying. We, we might like, and it may make our job more difficult.
There's a bumper sticker in there.
But being annoying is not against the law in America, okay? If I put my hands on you, Mayor Spillman, then I have committed a crime, and the chief can arrest me for that, okay? Just like I teach my employees and I teach my clients that if they put their hands on someone, they have committed a crime, they've crossed the line. And it seems to me that there's been a lot of discussion tonight about how there are laws on the books, and I know there are laws on the books about assault, and that I can call the chief and report an assault, and he will take a report and investigate that and respond appropriately. I trust that in our local police department. I've done it many times, and I know it to be the case. But I think that we have to, to define some of these terms in this situation, and, and that the council might want to reconsider this ordinance and the language in it so that it doesn't, it doesn't make an appearance to, to enforce annoying behavior, but keeps within the bounds of regular criminal behavior like assault. Because like I said, if, if annoying means I'm raising my voice, being inappropriate in any number of ways, that's, that's no fun to be around, but it should be a crime. Thank you.
You're 47 seconds old. No. Thank you, Gary. We've had a number of people up a couple of times. Is there anyone else that either hasn't spoke or has only been up here a month to talk? They would like to talk to you.
I got two sentences I could do from all the way back in without having to go over. I'll go ahead and do that.
No, please. No.
The question will come up. Did you fail to think about the inevitability of this ordinance causing a victim of the Rockier Valley fires of 2015 to be fined or caught in jail?
Jeff, I don't want to have to have.
This question is for you. And if you didn't think about it, or you did think about it, if you did think about it.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak other than Jeff? Okay. What I'd like to say is, I'm going to close the public hearing. I, I'd like to think that, again, I gave you very good leeway to say your piece, gave you plenty of time. We tried to be respectful, listen to everyone. After we close the public hearing, we're going to discuss things. I don't know what's going to be discussed, but if you could just please show the same respect that we tried to show you, to listen, to be quiet and respectful while we make discussions up here, I just want to please ask for that if we could. And with that, I will close the public, public hearing, and I will bring this back to staff and to council for discussion. Chief, anything you'd like to add?
I'm certainly open to any questions. I would just like to state that, you know, I've heard a lot about homelessness issues here tonight, which I greatly appreciate, and it's an issue that we need to work on with the community. But this, this ordinance is not about homeless, homelessness. This ordinance is about regulating a aggressive behavior that we've seen in our community. The reason we brought this, this ordinance before the council was to try to come up with a way to reasonably deal with these things that our business owners and residents are calling us about on a regular basis. And we certainly do not want to infringe on, on any free speech rights at all. And as we stated, panhandling is, is a free speech under the United States Constitution. We are not asking for that to go away. We just want to be able to regulate the behavior that's causing the complaints, that's it. And in my opinion, that's what this ordinance is about. And in reviewing it with our, our police staff and our legal counsel, we felt it was reasonable, a reasonable ordinance that, that didn't infringe on people's rights either way. While we did see ordinance that, that in my opinion, were infringing on people's constitutional rights and would not have been enforceable if we had tried to implement an ordinance like that. So, for me, that, that sums up my belief on this ordinance and why it's necessary for our city. In addition to, the only other thing we've already talked about is the administrative possibilities of dealing with that way. I think that's important as well. And I'll leave it at that unless the council has further questions for the police department.
Actually, I have a question for David. If a person has a reasonable expectation to be allowed onto a property, say Shopping Center, store, Costco, whatever, can that private property owner ban panhandling since it's a constitutional right?
Well, they have certain rights under the penal code related to trespass. However, when there are businesses that's open to the public, there are limits on when the police could actually enforce those trespass laws, because they've already been invited on by being open to the public, and they have to request that they leave. And then it comes to the issue of whether or not they can institute a citizen's arrest. And the penal code provisions, which are 602, I believe, are pretty stringent in terms of the intent element. You have to be intentionally interfering with business. So, there are certainly barriers to actually enforcing the penal code provisions. But there's certainly plenty of case law with respect to a area that's private property but is essentially similar to like a town square. And there are, there are additional, there are basically more First Amendment rights that, that a person has to engage in expressive activity in those places that they wouldn't have, for example, inside the store. And that often comes up with the tissue gatherers, which was correctly mentioned, this, this ordinance does not touch on, since that's a political speech. And likewise, religious speech is not dealt with by this ordinance by them.
Questions you need?
Questions? Well, you know, I've been dealing with all different types of people for the last 46 years, actually long beyond that, but that's how long I've been here in Lake County. And I'm not from the City of Lakeport as far as my business is concerned. I spend more time over in Lucerne than I do here in Lakeport. And believe me, I know a lot about people that are homeless or appear to be homeless or that are panhandling or that are shoplifting or that are committing aggressive behavior or are flat-out drunk. And we have to deal with all these different types of behavior. And I really appreciate the warmth and the consideration and the love that I see for the homeless people that are, that are going to be hurt by, you know, permitting process or something like that. But on the other hand of it, dealing with these, with certain people, not these people, with certain people over and over and over again, we have got, as a business owner, and unlike most of you, I don't think I've had a day off since February, because I work in my business seven days a week, because it's tough out there. And it's tough for homeless people a lot. But the thing is, when I have to deal with people over and over interfering with my business and people coming in, and I know that when you're a pastor and you're a counselor and you work with disabled people, you're used to that. But my mom's 83 years old. Someone comes up to her, asks her for money. Maybe that's not a problem for you. It, it might be a little bit of a problem for me. Or they come up and they knock on her window or something like that, you know? And this goes on all the time. I know that one of the local optometric offices has a lot of high-class people going in and out of there, and they're getting hit up all the time. They're not counselors, they're not ministers, they're not preachers, they're not pastors, and they don't know how to deal with that. And we're not talking about people that are normally going around with a sign, sitting down in Safeway and, you know, please give me money, whatever. We're not talking about that any more than Kevin right here can tell you, we have got probably 10,000 code violations in the City of Lakeport, give or take 5,000 or 6,000. They don't go on those unless there's a call or a complaint. And the thing is, this isn't about trying to keep people from having free speech or any of that stuff. We are trying to give a tool to the police to deal with problem people that are interfering with life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in Lakeport. And people are saying, oh, no, you're stereotyping. No, you're picking on a certain group. I don't think, and I, someone referred to the cops as good people, and they don't do the right thing. You can't get arrested here unless you really do something stupid. You know, this is just a matter of trying to give a tool to somebody. We don't even bother with shoplifters anymore. It's such an onerous process, we just kick them out and say, get out of here, I don't want to fill out the paperwork. The cops have to come over 45 minutes, they have to fill out all the paperwork on it. It's too onerous. This is designed to expedite the process. You don't have to go to the DA, it probably wouldn't fit anyway. We're not really looking at putting someone in jail for six months at 20,000 plus. It's about the administrative citation to deter the behavior, to correct their behavior, fundamentally change some of the evil wicked things they're doing. And not everybody is ever going to do that, just a handful of them. And these are not the homeless people necessarily. These are people that have a job, and they're doing this because it's more lucrative than maybe the job they already have. But I'm not saying I don't disagree with maybe the permitting process or something like that. It reminds me of the marijuana issue. There's a lot of people that are growing marijuana in Lakeport illegally, but you don't hear them getting arrested because they're doing it within the confines of a particular draft ordinance we put together and got approved. There's no problems with it. Everybody's living, you know, congenially back and forth in the community. There's no problems. This year is just kind of the same thing. It's just a tool to give our cops an opportunity to deal with problems and problem people when and if they occur. It's not some blanket thing where they're going to spend all their time chasing down homeless people and trying to give them a hard time. So, I mean, I totally love the fact that people are so caring, but we're not talking about these just homeless people that really have got, you know, they're, they're just got issues. We're talking about people that are criminally going after people and abusing people, and there's only going to be a minuscule amount of those. I don't see this as a big thing. Do you see that you're going to have 20 or 30 calls on this, chief? Or is this going to be something that just occasionally you're going to have to deal with somebody and you're going to have to straighten them out, send them down the road, and maybe administrative citation? But there's going to be 647(c) action going on, that I see.
Yeah, I would agree.
But I'm not sure that I, you know, the permitting process, maybe it is too onerous. Maybe we need to have a, a task force of, of, you know, stakeholders if it's such a big deal to so many people that they just don't, that they want to work out the nuts and bolts of this. The idea of getting rid of that particular behavior, A through F, if that's all we need. But, you know, somebody went through a lot of trouble to write this up for particular reasons, maybe we need to find those reasons out. But I, I just see that, that our police need enforcement capability to help protect life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in our City of Lakeport. And the people that are being abused are probably working, and they're not down here complaining and saying, hey, go for it, appreciate what you're doing for us, get these people out of my hair because I'm trying to run a business. And people that don't run a business 24/7, maybe they'll appreciate it because they're in business of people, and life, and love, and happiness, and hugs, and kisses. We don't get to do that all the time. We've got to be in there grinding and out trying to make a living. And when these people come in... And when these people come in, we just say, hey, man, can you just move on? So it's tough when people don't have a tool to deal with that. And I see it with the shoplifting, see it with the bad checks. What are you going to do? So I feel that a tool is needed. I'm not sure that maybe this package is what we want, but I definitely am in favor of having some kind of tool. But I don't know that the process and all this other stuff, maybe we need to take a longer, more diversified look, maybe with some kind of group. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, my name. So the primary intent, as the chief mentioned, for the permitting process is to provide notice to the individuals who were going to be engaging in solicitation. And it sort of requires them to, they will be provided with that list of the behaviors that are and are not.
And I get that. I just, it seems to be a stumbling block for some of the people. And I think the behavior we're trying to get rid of is pretty self-evident. And it's not like we're trying to single out homeless people or people that are hanging out. This is something that's just designed to get rid of the aggressive people that are affecting the other people and the businesses. That's what I'm looking out for, you know? I just don't want them to be able to go in and randomly assault people in some way, shape, or form, which is subjective and who wants person assaulted? Maybe someone else's kindness. But it would be nice to have a tool that you could go in there without having to get the manager to come down and sign a complaint and go through all this stuff, and then nothing gets done, and then we waste more time in the police force, which we're already understaffed in shorthand.
That's right. So another point, I guess, would be, for example, with the door-to-door solicitation, if the police were to get a call about someone, they would easily be able to determine whether or not permit was issued for someone to be soliciting in that area. And if there was, if the complaint didn't relate to the actual behaviors that were prohibited, then the police wouldn't be spending any more time on it because they claim that person is doing that unlawfully.
Right. And that's a good point because, you know, with the notice that the city attorney mentioned earlier, people get word of the rules. And then we do have a tracking system, we would have a tracking system to be able to know if we got calls, if somebody already got a permit.
I'd like to echo that. That's one of the really important points that was made a lot tonight is this door-to-door solicitation, how important it is to have those people register with us so we know who's out there in the street. It's more than just the panhandler. It would also affect that population having some information on who's out there.
Kenny?
One of the other things that I noticed on there, that this is only good for 30 days, but with discretion could go up to six months. I'm surprised nobody brought that up, that somebody could fall into starvation or whatever because they're only allowed to do it 30 days and then they could re-up their command or, you know, it says up to only six months. And so I just, that seemed arbitrary, and those are what the kind of things that always board, and you want to make any decisions that seem to be arbitrary. Because if you have freedom of speech and you literally can come and panhandle anytime you want, then how can you say that the permit is only good for 30 days if you have the, you know, the constitutional right to ask for money 365 days a year? So that permit seems incongruent with our rights to panhandle because obviously it's not unlawful because I found that out myself when people were hitting me up saying, hey, that guy out there is hitting him for money and he's doing it. So, well, it's not against the law. So that's something that I don't really fully agree with, 30 and then up to six months. And so suddenly now they're not homeless and they don't need the money, so now they don't get a permit. That does not make any sense to me necessarily. And how they pull that off in another city, I don't know.
Chief, what was the reasoning behind that, 30 days and up to six months?
Do you have any information on that?
No specific reasoning as far as this was in the language of the solicitation ordinance that we got from another location, county.
So there's nothing to prevent a person from getting renewed their permit? It's just a time limit? It's just a time limit for things change, updated information?
That was my belief, just that it's so it could be freshened up. But certainly, I mean, you know, we're here to-
You could say it could be renewed every six months or renewed or something like that, but it sounded like-
Certainly, we're here to have the councils, you know, if we want to listen to the councils if they have any of those kind of concerns. But generally, just to keep things updated like anything else, I mean, you don't issue a permit just forever.
I mean, business license expires every 12 months, so it's the same idea. I've advised the city that these permits have to be granted because you're absolutely right. These people have, everyone has a First Amendment right to engage in peaceful solicitation. And that's why this ordinance is drafted so that the only restrictions are the time, place, and manner restrictions. There's no restrictions on contact or speech.
Can I, I don't want to jump ahead of council here, but I just wanted to ask one quick question if I could. Are you, chief, are you looking to do any type of handout if this does move forward? I know when we did the marijuana ordinance, which Kenny brought up, there was a certain leeway period, let's call it an education period, break-in period. And then also in this instance, you know, the, maybe the benefit of informational handouts. I don't know if that was intended.
Well, I haven't specifically thought about that on this case, but what I can tell you is that we always try to do public education and warnings on any new ordinance that comes into place. I mean, with the marijuana was a good example. We did a lot of public advertising, but we generally would put out information and give a time period where we weren't issuing tickets on any kind of new ordinance so that we can have time to educate the public. So that's not uncommon for us to do that. And certainly, we'd do that in this case.
And actually, I think that might be what the original comment, when the comment was made on my interpretation, but when they said, you know, you have a tough time getting thumped on by the Lakeport police, they didn't say thumped on. I think the intention there is, I've always found since I've been in Lakeport, that the police are not necessarily here to really go after people. It's always been about education. It's a small town. You pull someone over and you say, hey, you're doing this or whatever, I'm going to let you go. It's a small town. You're going to see them again and you're going to remember them. I've always thought that Lakeport police did a really good job of being tolerant and working towards, you know, educating and not, you know, the upper hand.
Well, the goal has always been to protect the safety of the public, our residents, visitors, and everyone coming in. And you don't always have to make an arrest to accomplish that goal. So it's protect the public and use what means you have to accomplish those goals. And if it's education, then that's what it is.
Chief Rasmussen, suppose law enforcement responded to a complaint at some public place such as Safeway or Kmart for, say, threatening behavior, and that person did have a permit, how does this permit or this ordinance enable you to deal with that in a more efficient manner than we would otherwise be reverting to that penal code?
Well, we would round the investigation the same way, whether we're looking at a California penal code, a city ordinance, if we were doing it criminally or civilly administratively, we stopped to do an investigation to verify the facts of the call. So if we get a call that somebody was aggressively panhandling, then we would have to interview people. We'd interview the caller. We would do our own observations. We would try to figure out if they were in fact in violation of the ordinance. So it would be done the same way. But the issue with the, just relying on California penal code section, I don't think is the right way to do this because that limits how we can handle the situation. If I don't have it in, because I can't handle the California penal code section as an administrative citation. I've got to either arrest the person or cite him or do an investigation to send to the DA and request an arrest plan. That's not necessarily what we're looking to do. We're not looking to go out here and make arrests. We're looking to stop the behavior and correct the behavior. So I think, you know, it would be dealt with, the investigation is exact no matter what, whether it's a penal code or a city ordinance. But the city ordinance gives us other avenues to deal with it, I think, is the answer to that question for me. But I don't know if that answered your question.
Maybe I don't understand my own question. How about if, what I would like to understand, have greater comfort with, is how is this permitting process itself, the permit itself, how does that enable law enforcement to respond quicker? Well, I know A and B, okay, so, but A and B about having a permit seems to be more where we're focusing. There's an aggressive call or there's a call with an aggressive complaint or a complaint about aggressive behavior. We respond, that person does not have a permit. We now don't have to go through the multiple steps of getting the store owner involved. Is that right? We have the ability to respond at a lower level?
Well, if I understand your question right now, I could think of an example where, let's say we got a call from a store manager, let's just say Safeway, who reported this, but they didn't have the time to necessarily get involved with the investigation. We would still have to interview them, but we would be able to deal with it without them making a citizen's arrest. Does that answer your question? So that's, so if I understand that right, that's why I was saying that the reason I prefer having a city ordinance, even if there's a state law, is that it gives me a greater ability to use discretion and handle it in a different manner. So if I could handle it in a civil manner with an administrative citation, then I don't have to have the same, I don't have to see the same things. I don't have to get a citizen's arrest. I don't have to have the same kind of statement. It would be easier for me to deal with it that way, if that-
Hopefully, that answers your question. Yes, because whether or not the person has a permit, I mean, if they don't have a permit, you can deal with it because they don't have a permit. But if they do have a permit, they've already acknowledged, I mean, they've recognized these behaviors as being undesirable and so they're not even-
Yes. And the point, the good point with that is that they've been given the notice, this is a behavior that's undesirable. Hopefully, they don't, hopefully, they just don't engage in it at all after they've seen the notice. And maybe that itself prevents some issues from happening, just like anything else. I mean, if you get notice that something's wrong, you know, you're probably not going to do it necessarily the same as you would if you didn't know. So I think that's also a benefit of just the notice itself, stopping behavior.
Do you see any, oh, I'm sorry. Maybe one more point is that the penal code that deals with the solicitation, that 647(c), I think it talks about having accosting somebody, right? So it's using this old language that our penal code uses. So it's not really specific and it's sometimes difficult to interpret whether or not this is accosting behavior. The ordinance and many ordinances like this throughout the state are specific about, you know, it threatens public safety when you are trying to get, you know, stopping cars in the street and trying to get money from them. You know, it threatens health and safety when you're, you know, touching, physically contacting someone in an attempt to solicit money. So, but that's, I think, another aspect of the benefit of a local ordinance. You're able to specify the type of conduct, time, place, and manner restrictions again that are prohibited, whereas with the penal code, you're relying on these rather old and vague notions that, you know, may have interpretations in case law. But that's not what our residents necessarily have access to when they're trying to determine how to comply with law.
And the ordinance is the behavior is specific. It says you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do Y, so we can point right to that.
Do you see any problem with a one-year period for a permit?
I personally don't see a problem with that. I mean, I can't think of a reason right now where that would necessarily be an issue.
About the time response, as far as getting a permit, I think it noted that the city manager would notify this person by mail if they had a mailing address. Okay, how would we do it if they don't?
Well, they could always come back in and check on it.
Well, typically, we have other things that come up like that, and we would take their information and we would say, be back at such and such time, we'll have it ready to go for you. It happens at the police department a lot on a lot of different types of documents and things that we have to deal with people on. We deal with people who don't have contact information a lot and where we set up appointments with them and be back at such and such time. Or sometimes we even send an officer to go to them where they're going to be to deal with it. So I don't think that would necessarily be that big of an issue. And I would intend to streamline this process, you know, make it a very simple process. The application is going to be taken directly out of the language of the ordinance, as typically how you would deal with something like that. Just as an example where we talked about, you know, they provide an address unless they have articulated why they can't. So, I mean, I'd like to see these things, you know, turned around the same day. You know, somebody fills out the permit. I mean, we have other permits of people fill out every single day, for example, on alcohol sales. We turn those around and sometimes immediately and usually by the end of the day, every day, you know, do it over 150 times a year. So I think it can be streamlined to make it a very easy, quick process.
No more questions? Thank you.
Typical business permit is a year?
Yes. Yeah, you could buy six months or a year, right?
There's prorated for, you know, it's within the period of time, but yes, they're issued for you.
Yeah.
Well, I would say this is a public safety issue and that over the years, the complaints that I've gotten have just increased. And it's gone from, you know, someone asking for money or someone asking for food to now it, you know, this guy followed me all the way to my car and I had my baby with me. Or, you know, in front of my business, my clients don't want to come in because these people just won't leave them alone out front. So when our residents and our tourists have lost the enjoyment of their public spaces or they feel threatened, then it's important that we take some sort of action that we can handle it. The aggressiveness, it's very uncomfortable. And I don't think this is an attempt for, it's definitely not solving homeless. It's not going to make anybody go away. And panhandling will still happen, but this will give us a tool that we can deal with those types of complaints and make sure that everyone can enjoy the public spaces. I would consider making the permit time longer and I would look at making sure there's hours of panhandling that are allowed.
I don't know if the hours would be constitutional. We would have to look at that. But I certainly don't think there's any issue with the length of the permit being longer.
And Margaret, in the verbiage of the ordinance, and David, this probably goes to you too, city manager may issue a permit valid for more than 30 days. So an instance is where, in the beginning at least, if we do have someone that is unfortunately homeless and, you know, contact information and be able to contact them could be difficult, then in my opinion, issuing a longer permit at that point would be the best thing to do. You know, I don't want to blanket take away the 30 days if this is approved because some of the door-to-door solicitation companies, I want them to be able to be held accountable just in case that we do get one company that maybe is, you know, that just came into the city and dropped off two families of people, they hit door-to-door, and we haven't gotten notice yet that they're, they just got expired in another state or have a criminal investigation against them. So I want to keep the 30 days in there. But I think that, you know, and we're humans too. I mean, we're not trying to, you know, a person is homeless. And I agree with Pastor Shannon and many of you out there, you know, there's some, you know, human issues here that go far beyond, you know, panhandling that we are trying to deal with at the state level and county and in both cities here in Lake County. And I know that from my experience, those that I know to be homeless in Lakeport, I have not seen them be aggressive at Safeway or- have not seen them be aggressive at Safeway, or at Bruno's, or Kmart. So, you know, I wouldn't have any problem, you know, at that point. I mean, that's, you know, a six-month permit for them would be fine, so that there's least amount of contact. You know, I understand that telling someone that you don't have an address or a phone number because you're homeless, I know that, well, I don't know that that can be embarrassing, I can only imagine how embarrassing that would be, but at the same time, that very same person is asking people for money, and I can't imagine that that's not embarrassing either. But anyhow, in my opinion, I think that this addresses a very specific topic, and that is aggressive solicitation. And the permit process, to me, that permit itself gives us a guaranteed contact to the permitees, that if, even if they can't read the items listed that are in this ordinance for the manner of solicitation and prohibitions, then we, as the city here, it'll be our responsibility as a staff member, and I'm hoping that our staff, this will be part of it, is then we can read it to them. And I just think that that allows us to touch more people, to get this out there, to how we're going to protect against this behavior, than even just going through the parking lots of our local shopping centers and trying to pass out flyers. I mean, that's just my opinion, but definitely the 30 days, I...
And if they mention they're homeless, we would like to have as much material on assistance for them as possible, and they could use twofold.
Absolutely.
If there's information out there that we can get, if somebody gives us what's a permit and doesn't tap an address and states they're homeless, we'd love to be able to refer them to services that are available.
And I think that would be a key process in some of the beginning, and continuing our public-private partnerships with our local churches and the local folks, many of them here tonight, that do hope, you know, those that are homeless. So I think that's just part of it, but I think this, for me, does not... This isn't about homelessness, this is just about aggressive solicitation in my mind. And I think the ordinance is well-written to address that, and the permit process, I think, is the necessary step, so that we can make sure that we convey the information on, you know, what is aggressive solicitation.
Well, I think we can easily add just a discretionary, some verbiage to that, 30 days where the authority would have discretion issue for longer, but still...
It's in there.
We also have a pretty well-fleshed-out revocation of permit clause, that, so in that time where we're hearing about whatever they've done in other states, we can immediately revoke that permit as well. We may want to add, because it actually, it doesn't, it says that they violated any of the A through Ks, but we may want to add some wording that, you know, if it comes to light, that they're fraudulently operating, or something like that, you know...
Well, I think by referencing, like, A, so that they were, if the permit they issued was based on false pretenses or something, that...
Right, right.
I think that, I would attribute it to be such a thing by incorporating subdivision A.
And it does say in the term of permit, that the city manager may issue a permit valid for more than 30 calendar days.
One thing I'd like to add, kind of piggybacking off of the counsel and shield, I've worked for a number, well, for about a time, second job when I lived in Ukiah, doing private security at the Ukiah Hospital. And I ran into a large lot of homeless that were in the area, they were doing renovations at the time, there were buildings there, there were railroad tracks, there was another structures. So I encountered, over the months and months that I worked there, a lot of homeless. Typically, I found them to be humble, and polite, and friendly. For the most part, if they're contacting you, they're trying to contact you almost like a kid for the first time at school. They've got to try to win you over, if they're going to try and get a few dollars from you or a few cents. I don't really feel this is directed at the homeless. It may occasionally touch on them, but I don't believe it's directed at them, and I don't think that the homeless are the issue, in my opinion. I don't think that they're typically the aggressive panhandlers. Other than that, that was the only point that I would like to make.
If I could just make one more comment. Under the term of permit, if we could change the wording to say that the city manager may issue a permit valid for more than 30 calendar days, but in no eventual, the permit be valid for more than a year, that takes care of that, and allows for the discretion.
I'm good for that.
Does not create a problem for us.
Any other discussion?
Well, you know, the thing that this reminds me of is, you know, everybody has, or almost everybody has pets, and a lot of people have dogs, and when someone marches through your yard, and the dog starts to bark, and, you know, and you go, "Oh, well, there's probably somebody there." But when it's 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock, and there's a barking dog, and it was on, and on, and on, and on, and you have an ordinance to deal with that, because it is a problem to, you know, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, and peace and tranquility, and it's very aggravating. And this is similar to that, there's, most of the dogs are, you know, they're not going to be a problem. And this particular problem one, we need to have an opportunity to deal with this succinctly, quickly, and efficiently, so that everyone else isn't affected with it on a regular basis. And that's kind of how I see this thing. I don't think it's going to be a big deal, matter of fact, after the education, I don't know that it's going to be a problem at all, and probably everything will come into alignment, it'll be a beautiful place to go, and all the love, and hugs, and kisses, and all that stuff, for the regular, non-problem people, it's going to go on and on, but the people that are a problem are going to be brought into some kind of compliance, and if they aren't, then they'll get administrative citation, and they'll have to pay, you know, 20, or 50, or 100 bucks, or whatever. And they're probably the ones that have a fistful of money, because they do it for a living, and they also have a job, so I'm not really worried about them not being able to pay the fine. So I think we've done a good job fleshing this out, I think we've agreed that this is not about homelessness, this is about protecting, you know, the citizens of Lakeport, protecting the pursuit of business in Lakeport, and that's what we're really all about, is trying to keep everybody happy as best we can, the businesses, and not feel that they can't go out safely to a shopping center or into a business.
Getting the husband, you're not looking for husband, kids, or anything. Just want to make sure. Any other discussion? Then we would either be looking for a motion, or a modified motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt the proposed ordinance, adding Chapter 5.24 of Title V to the Lakeport Municipal Code regulating solicitation as amended. Second.
I have a motion in the second. Do we need to call for a vote, or do we just...
Just to, can I just clarify, so that the amendment is just as to, section is on page four, section 5, 24070, you want to change six months to one year?
Yes.
That's the only amendment?
Correct.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Here, my vote. And I would like to thank the public. You were very polite, and I know sometimes it's frustrating if we make decisions that are counter to what you're looking for, but I just want to commend you on your patience with us and your plateness. Thank you. All right. Does anybody need to take a break?
No.
No, okay. We're going to move on then to item B, which would be the CDVG Program Income Use, Proposed Resolution Approving Additional Business Loan Funds. Yes. We're going to take a five-minute break here. All right. All right. So back at it here, we're going to move on to item B, the CDVG Program Income Use, Proposed Resolution Approving Additional Business Loan Funds. And Margaret, is this you?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, in 2014, we got a CDVG grant for business loan, added to loan funds out to small businesses here in Lakeport, and we also added another activity for the lakefront planning grant. And then the state changed the rules on program income, which is the principal interest that comes back on the loans, and how we use it. And so now, we have to use the program income before we can use any grant funds. So it's important for us to get our program income back out in use in the community ASAP, so that we can actually use our grant funds, and then not be behind in our timelines and expenditures that we need. So we, back in December, we added, or is it, excuse me, yeah, back in, I can't remember my date here, we added additional activity to do the, with extra program we had, we added an extra activity to do the Carnegie Library ADA architectural barrier, to remove architectural barriers for ADA access. We, in the meantime, have received more program income than what we had intended at this time, so that means we need to spend the program income in order to get access to our grant funds that we have. So what we're asking for, we have approximately about $130,000 right now over what we had intended at the beginning, when we did the first supplemental activity, and we are getting a lot of requests for business loans, so we believe that we could use all the money that we have extra in more small business loans in the community. We had mentioned in the public hearing notice that we would entertain maybe doing streets, and the streets have to be in low-income neighborhoods only, it can't be in business districts or anything, but there's a long process to get the approval from CDVG to use any of those funds towards streets, which past experience of trying to get them to approve us doing any kind of street reconstruction, we would not be able to, after having more conversation with CDVG, we believe that timeframe would be, would not give us time to go through that process. And we do have businesses that are, we have three or four that we've already funded. Three, and then we have about three, three to four that are ready, are in, either in underwriting, or are in the application stage for loan. So, and when you use it for a loan versus a project, those monies come back again to the city, and then we can reuse it again in the future, so we also, by doing it out as a loan, those monies come back again to, for future uses. So the staff is recommending that council would approve the attached resolution to add more funding to our, to the 2014 CDVG grant, to allow the extra program income funding coming in to be used for small business loans. Do you have any questions? Would you like to answer?
The thing that always occurs to me, having been a big fan of bootstrapping and not getting tied up with business loans, that would just add to the other funding issues and maintenance costs, and trying to stay afloat, the thing that occurs to me is that, and I've seen a couple businesses around that have failed over the years, is there any kind of criteria and guarantees and, like, training, or like, counseling that we give these people above and beyond to kind of protect, you know, I mean, this $130,000 is nothing to sneeze at, and then you hand it out, if someone's going to be around in six months or a year, do they actually have any business acumen, or what's the standard process, or they, you know, they fill out a nice, you know, big stack of papers that's a business plan, but in reality, that a lot of us spin around going, "Really?" So that's kind of my question, is how do we determine who gets and how much?
We use Community Development Services, CBS. Jeff Lucas is the principal there, and he's been doing this for many, many years. He's pretty thorough with the underwriting.
I've worked for Jeff, I've actually done some of the consulting, so that's what I was...
Yeah, so he reviews all of these, and we most always, we always have some type of guarantee, sometimes it's, depending on the loan, the situation, what type of guarantee we have on it, not so much a guarantee, but we do have a lien on either a home or car, some type of guarantee for payment on that, so. But I have a lot of confidence in Jeff, I mean, we've had loans that have gone bad, just like any other lending institution. The fortunate part about this for the city is that this is grant funds from the state, but I mean, we feel, we take the responsibility, like, it's our money to make sure we lend it out right to, for its best use, but it isn't from our general fund or our own personal coffers at the city, you know, having said that, but we do take that very seriously, and I have a lot of respect for Jeff and his underwriting, so.
Well, yeah, Jeff's been around, I know he's gone all the way up into I-5 and areas, areas, and that's important that people actually understand the economics of Lake County and Lakeport.
And if he sees that a business needs assistance with a business plan, or, you know, anything with business, we do have, actually, right now, we have a very good business assistance program through SBDC, we have a really good, they have a good employee there now that is very good at helping with business plans, and helping businesses understand what they need to put this together, so that's one of the resources, there's other resources too.
At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this proposed resolution approving additional funds? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and I will bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the additional supplemental activity to the 2014 CDVG 9883 grant for the use of additional business assistance loan funds.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
You know, the CDVG would be a lot easier to say had there not been the club CBGBs. I always have to, I pause always before I say it, so I know I'm going to say CBGBs.
I wasn't in that club, so I got it.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Item number seven, we'll move on to council business. City clerk, we're looking at a resolution calling for a general municipal election and requesting approval for election services, and this will be done.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. As in past years, the city normally consolidates its election with the County of Lake, and utilizes the Lake County registrar for their election services. This fall, we have three seats up for election that will expire at the end of 2016. The city could conduct the election itself, but it would be very impractical and expensive, so as part of the elections process, we need to, the city council, we need to adopt a resolution calling for, providing for, and giving notice of the general municipal election, and request election services from the county, and do that in the form of a resolution that would be sent up to the board supervisors. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from council?
Your SOP, right?
Yeah.
Is there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Do it? Well...
That's the best public on the planet.
It's not very professional. I'll bring that back to council for a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt a resolution calling for, providing for, and giving notice to the general municipal election to be held in the city of Lakeport, County of Lake, State of California, on the 8th day of November 2016, for the purpose of electing three city council members each to hold office for a... electing three city council members each to hold office for a term of four years or until their successors are elected and qualified, requesting consolidation of that election with the state general election, and requesting approval of the Lake County Board of Supervisors for election services to be provided by the county elections official.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next on council business, item number B, sales tax measure. And, Laura, this is two.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On April, council reviewed and approved a work plan to explore the possibility of a revenue ballot measure for November 2016. After an RFP process, the firm FM3 was hired, and they did a public opinion and research survey. Tonight, we have with us Miranda Everett from FM3, who is going to give us a presentation on the results of the survey. It's too bad we didn't have this earlier. We lost all of our audience for this presentation. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Miranda to give us the results. Hi, Miranda.
Good evening. All right, so I'm here to present results of the issued surveys conducted in the community May 10 through 23rd. It was last month. To start with methodology, we surveyed 178 Lakeport voters modeled to who we think are going to participate in general November. We used online survey as well as cell line lines, phone type, and margin of error for a sample size of 178 is plus or minus 7.4%. If you see any things that look like arithmetic mistakes, it's rounding.
That's what I always say too.
Right. So, starting with life in Lakeport, most voters feel that Lakeport is a good place to live. 79% rated it excellent or good, in fact. Only 5% said poor, and no one took the option of extremely poor. So these are great results for your community. We also asked whether voters approve or disapprove, and how strongly they feel about that opinion for the Lake County government, the city government, and the police department. They strongly approve of the police department, almost a majority there say they strongly approve, you know, the most glowing recommendation they can give. And then the city and county, those approval ratings are about the same, which might indicate that folks kind of don't see a difference between the two, or that they just have similar feelings about the two levels of government. Another thing we did here is ask folks to rate the seriousness of different problems facing their community. So you'll see those ranked in order of the percentage called them either extremely or very serious. Right at the very top there, 47% called the condition of city streets an extremely serious problem here. Behind that, the economy, two different flavors of that, and then a variety of other issues, homelessness, drug conditions. Way down at the bottom there, though, are things like emergency response times and the condition and quality of parks. So these are things that, in the example of emergency response times, and you'll also see that with the waste and efficiency question, that don't know, the gray bar is about a quarter there. So those are folks who might not have direct experience, they haven't had to request an emergency response, so they might not know enough to say. But the condition and quality of parks, it seems that people are pretty satisfied with that. And we'll look at this in another way to side it here. We also asked residents if they feel more or less safe than they did a few years ago, and that's a deliberately kind of vague construction. We wanted to see their perception, and, you know, we can put that up against the real numbers that we know are true. But here we see a majority say it's about the same, or they don't know. Relatively few say that they feel safer, 10% there. And then you've got a little bit of a group there who say they feel less safe, although those who say they feel much less safe, it's only about 15%. Next, we asked generally, do voters believe the city has a need for additional funding to maintain essential services? Here, remarkable three quarters said there's great or some need in the community for additional funding. Almost 40% said that's a great need. This is a, this is a really good fundamental question, especially when approaching something like a tax measure. The things voters often look for are, they need to believe that there is a need for funding, they need to believe it will be spent well, and they need to believe that the items that will be spent on are ones that the community needs. So this is one leg of that stool, and it's a very strong one for your, your folks. So as I mentioned before, we did test satisfaction with city services, as well as importance of city services. You'll see the same set of items here and on the next slide. In this one, we asked what how important different items were, and at the very top, you've got keeping and repairing streets and roads. 89% called that extremely or very important priority for the city. 54% called that extremely important. It's a remarkably high number there. And just behind that, you've got some different elements of public safety, response from crimes, burglaries, and then the economy. So again, kind of paralleling the results from what voters see as the top problems in the community, it's three things. It's roads, public safety, and the economy. All right, so same items, but this time we asked whether voters are satisfied or dissatisfied, or in the pieces of gray bars there, they don't know enough to say. It's the different services, and you'll note that the one that was on the top, for most important, is now on the bottom, they are the least satisfied with that. And again, it's kind of flipped upside down. Again, parks are at the top there, and folks are overwhelmingly satisfied with that. Things that they know less about, that 47% is the patrol for local businesses, 42% for business permits and licenses, those might be things that if you're not a business owner, you don't know enough about to say. And another way to look at this, so we've got the percentage satisfied on one, the vertical, and on the horizontal is the importance. So down in that bottom corner, we see street repair highlighted. Those are the items that, that quadrant is, is where folks think things are relatively more important, but they're a little less satisfied than they are with other things. Up in that, up just above it, with parks and pools, property crimes, and violent crime response, those are the things that voters feel are more important and they're more satisfied with. So those are kind of your strengths and weaknesses there. And I'll note that the things all the way to the left there, like foot patrol, that is driven mostly by the fact that about half said they didn't know enough to say, not that people aren't satisfied. So turning to a specific wording for general purpose sales tax. Here is what we tested. The goal here was to get something as close to the 75 words that could be on the ballot as possible, with the idea that if it holds well and voters seem to support it, that you could just swap it on the ballot there and see how it goes. So here, we made sure to, we did our best guess at what was important in the community. So we've got, again, help with safety, roads, economic development. We did anticipate some of those, and this was with a lot of great input from cities have. And you've got remarkable results here. 43% said they would definitely vote yes on this measure. That is almost twice, no, it's twice those who say they would definitely vote no. Your total yes is 71%. So even with your 7% margin of error, you're over, you're over two-thirds. And this is general purpose, the only simple majority. So this is a really strong showing for an initial one-cent sales tax question. And again, this, all they heard about it is the 75 words. So looking just a little more closely at patterns among voters, you carry even a majority of Republicans. You've got 42% opposed, but you do have 58, which is more than you need overall. Democrats and independents, more than three quarters of each are supportive of that. So those are really strong results. We asked folks in their own words, among those who said yes on the measure, to tell us what, what about it made them want to vote yes. Roads and streets, one-third of them gave that as the answer. And then right behind that, you've got, again, public safety, and then kind of a more general, it's important for funding, everything's important in it, they want that. So some of our repeated responses are here, and this kind of underscores, again, what we said before. There's interest in keeping and hiring good police officers, good parks and roads, and just a lot of general, a general idea that there is a good quality of life in the city, and folks want to maintain it, both for themselves, for future generations, and so against tourism and economic stability in the future. You know, voters were asked the same question. There are many fewer of them, but percentages are here. And it's generally anti-tax. 31% said just want to pay more taxes, or a sense that the government would waste the money. And those are, I haven't found a single city anywhere where those aren't in the top two. So just a few of those vermin there. So again, it was, it's just the idea that taxes are too high, everyone would have to report it, so on. We also tested a half-cent sales tax. We, we did put a fine point on it and said what we just asked you was one cent, what about half a cent? We got no difference statistically here. 69% totally yes, 52% definitely yes. So it's a little stronger definite support, but within the margin of error you have, there's no real difference at all. We also put the fine point that this would only prevent tax, not help essential services. We tested a few different accountability measures. So we've got annual audits, citizens oversight, and then a sunset provision, and the lack of a sunset provision. There's no real big difference between the sunset and the no sunset. The annual audits are very important to your voters. So some conclusions. A one-cent general purchase sales tax, in our opinion, is viable for November 2016 electric. Support is strong initially, and stable throughout an exchange of pros and cons, which we also tested. You've got the clear need seen, that there is additional funding needed for basic services. Folks see a good or excellent quality of life, they generally approve of the city and the county, and definitely approve the police department here. So you've got that element of trust as well. Top issues, both for spending and just for focusing on, for your voters, are conditions of streets and roads, and then right behind that is public safety. And then in the mix as well is the economy, and a lot of folks, especially when their yes, open-ended statements told us, one of the reasons they would vote yes is because they believe it would actually help the economy by investing in kinds of, these kinds of services that make life your good and bring tourists and things like that. So I'm happy to take questions.
So the first question, would the, the average person that has a 1% sales tax, how much would that cost them a year?
That is extremely variable, depending on the types of things they buy, how much of their budget is food versus...
That's why I said half.
Yeah, that's, that's not my area of expertise, but yeah.
I mean, it's just, to me, it's ludicrous when someone says, it's, I can't afford it, when the fact is, is that when you're the city, I mean, you're the county seat, the people in Lakeport are getting a bonus because people are coming to CVS, to Safeway, to Walmart, I mean, to Kmart, and they're spending their money outside the city limits, and the money is going to the city of Lakeport, sales tax, and this is, this is a bonus for us that live here. Say they can't afford, you know, 12 or 14 or 20 bucks a year in sales tax, to me, it's just, that they would actually spend here that they weren't going to cost them.
It's kind of more equitable for the people that are using our streets and using public safety, that it's not just the 5,000 residents in Lakeport that are paying for this, it's, you know, eight people that are actually using our services.
It would just be interesting as far as like, you know, talking point when someone says, oh my God, you know, they're always raising taxes, you know, Republicans, and just anti-tax thing.
Yeah.
And you could say, well, the average person is paying, you know, $23 a year or so on.
I think when we looked at the road tax or ATC, I think they figured it was between $25 and $50 a year that you would pay.
Which is like a buck.
That was probably a half cent though, right? Or is that a one cent?
Oh, that's a good point. I can't remember.
It's, yeah, it's not that much. I mean, that's...
Oh, no, it's, it's, you know, it was not that much.
So the other, the other part of this is if the, if the council wants to move forward at this point, we'd be bringing this back later if you decided you wanted to put it on the ballot or not. But if you found the report favorable and thought we should keep investigating this possibility, staff is asking for an opportunity to then hire a firm to assist us with education and public outreach for the, for the measure, to, to also educate the need for, the need for the measure. So, I don't have any more questions that we're answering, but I just wanted to...
Was there some kind of caveat that we're not allowed to say anything after a certain point?
You can always educate, you just, you just can't actually advertise or market for it, but education is, you know, is always...
So you can, but as far as educating with public funds, that's all part of...
Yeah, you can, because that's, that's educating what the circumstances, as we do the budget and annual reports and talk about where the finances are, and what we're doing with our finances, and what it would take to do more, that's all part of the...
I just didn't want to be in violation of vice versa, saying, hey, man.
No, no. It gets a little bit more restrictive after you've already decided to put it on the ballot, but especially at this point right now, it's, it's very, you know, we can get opinion, more opinion from people we know, too, you know, as to what, what they did with their survey, do you want to continue finding out more from, from people? But it's, it's really important to get a, a good education component going with this. We did send out, you did approve us, allowed us to go out for not only an opinion poll, but also for a assistance with outreach, public outreach. But a lot of the firms, like FM3, they do the polling, but they don't do assistance with the education, and vice versa. So we did, wasn't a very successful outreach for that part. So we'd like to go out again and just request an RFP just for helping us with the outreach and education. And so that's, that's part of the, part of the staff report for approving that.
The question that I would might see here, especially if some of the previous people were here, is like, well, how much is that going to cost this? And if it looks like it's already going to pass, why would we want to waste the money?
Well, that's a very good point, because we could, you know, and sometimes measures pass without any marketing, and that's true, or I shouldn't say market, without any education or, you know, outreach. But I think it's really important for the community to understand, especially when the road, the roads was like the top, number one thing. And we did pass a general sales tax years ago that people thought it was just for the roads. Even though it wasn't just for the roads, we'd like to educate the public that we received $6 million in the timeframe since we've had that tax, but we've actually spent like $12 million on anything to do with roads. So there is a, a major education component if, if, you know, so that they realize that it wasn't misspent, it, we really, you know, did use that for the purpose and more than...
I think that's where the outreach and education is going to be key. Because I still get questions, I was answering one last night on measure I. I thought measure I was only for roads. And I said, no, measure I was just a general tax, measure J, very specifically an item, what the measure I funds will be spent, and I just outlined the items. I even sent them the link, the thing that Dan always gives us, it's very easy to understand. But I think that kind of outreach will, because anybody, those type of people will, wait a second, we're doing this exact same thing again, we've got a half-cent one now, and now we're going to do a one, but I think that's where the outreach is, will be key.
Yeah, I mean, they need to know the council, even though it wasn't targeted just for roads, but the council really respected, that they knew that was what the public, you know, wanted. And I think they need to realize that we, you know, council did do that, and did, did put a lot of that money into, into the roads.
I just want to say really quick that the survey's awesome. I love that. People love to live here. We should focus on that for a second. 80%, excellent. And almost 70% are happy with us, and 80% are happy with the police. So maybe we should focus on that.
Yeah.
Again, voters here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I asked Miranda how we fared compared to other communities.
That was actually going to be...
And she actually said, "We did really well."
Because you deal with a number of these, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah. A lot of the Bay Area, Orange County, all over California, and a couple of other states. As far as the, the quality of life rating, it's high, there's a long side, places like Pleasanton in the Bay Area, very suburban kind of towns.
Do they typically focus on roads and public safety? Are those two of the big hot buttons?
It depends, the, we've also done work with Clear Lake and Lake County, and roads just seem to be the number one thing along with the economy, just countywide. So, those really do stand out for you guys. And other places, like you think it's roads, but it's traffic. So, maybe a more urban area is, but public safety is almost always up the top.
Council, or ProTentative and myself both said on the area planning council, so we've seen not only the results that you guys did for the town of Clear Lake, and I know that those were road specific, but that, for us, it's, public safety is going to be one of the biggest keys, and we've got a really hot button topic going on right now with that, and we've had a town forum as well. So, I think that's going to, going to help us drive it, I mean, those two components are, everything else is secondary for most people.
Miranda, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for hanging out for...
You haven't beaten a record.
Were you getting nervous, like, "Wow, look at all these people here for my presentation"?
So, the resolution asks, or, excuse me, the, what we're requesting is to not go over $25,000 on the outreach and education component if council chooses to move forward with allowing us to go out further RFP. And also, what we're asking is that we do not bring it, that we do not have to bring it back to council after we get, because of the timeframe, we just, as long as it's under that, and we've gone, we've vetted through the best consultant that we can move forward without bringing it back again, just because we're, we're starting to run out of time, and so that's part of the ask on there, too.
Is that legit?
Yes.
It's legit.
You're very, you can do whatever you want.
Are there any members of the... Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize staff to pull with vendor selection and work on public education and outreach on a potential revenue ballot measure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We, I'm moving forward. I love those numbers.
Did we need to authorize the increased budget appropriation, or did you put that in there?
It's in...
It's part of the...
Yeah, it's in. Yeah, increased budget appropriation, yeah. Well...
Look to authorize staff to approve vendor selection, work on education, budget appropriation of general fund reserve, amount of $25,000 to fund it.
That's what I thought he said.
All right. Long evening. City Council Communications. By the way, thank you, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
I'll start with Margaret. What do you got?
I don't want to help us, anybody else, I'm, I'm not going to report.
I'm not going to be here next meeting, so my following...
Oh, my God, who are we going to do?
What?
Civil station order should not be on that agenda, it should be fine.
All right, fine.
Dan, I don't know if I want to talk to you.
There's going to be a PowerPoint on the screen.
I'm preparing a PowerPoint as we speak. No, budget, next time around, next meeting, so we're gearing up for that. And it will be preliminary budget because there's been a lot of activity in planning and company for this budget, so we're going to present a very basic preliminary spending for adoption on the 21st, and we'll go from there.
Okay. What can you do?
Chief?
Just a reminder, we'll swear in a new police officer here Monday morning at 9:00 AM, the times will change. So, if anyone is available, we'll just stop by, you're welcome.
Yeah, Stanley's from Southern California, so they will fully be good that morning, so that's why we're not doing any of council meetings. So, anybody that can come out, we'd really appreciate it.
I got a nice email back from...
Monday at 9:00 here?
Monday at 9:00 here.
Yeah. I got a nice email back from the...
Oh, good.
I was out of work on Monday. Great, so it's 9:00 AM in City Timmy.
Yes, sir.
Kevin?
Downtown project is well underway. I heard him a little bit. Can't hear him now, but things, things seem to be progressing pretty well. I have heard that a few people are getting comments. We are not getting any comments at staff level, and even my discussions with the night contact and the day contact, they have not been getting a whole lot. So, please forward anything that you guys are getting, and we'll make sure they were good. But, all in all, it seems to be progressing very well.
A lot of it's Facebook, so which means it's all true.
Absolutely.
I know, so we're not going to make any comments. We also, granite construction is donating to large banners, one to go across at Port Street, and then one, so you don't have to hang out this downtown on the senior Meals on Wheels building. So, just stating business growth and, you know, and letting about that. So, that should be coming any day now, they, they're paying for that, that was outside their scope, and they're doing that for us.
We're also working on getting some stuff for windows in the shop fronts, and then also some weekly updates on Facebook as well, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Kelly?
No report.
Charles McParlett?
Said enough.
Charles McKeel?
Kenny said it.
That's all, Missouri?
No report, thank you.
All right, Dan?
Nothing's wrong.
I just wanted to thank, real quick, Councilwoman Turner for coming out on Memorial and helping us with our little run for West Side Park. And Margaret was out there doing a lot of work on that Saturday and Sunday, as was the chief. I don't know if I missed anybody else out there working, but anyways...
I was out supporting.
Yes, you were out supporting, yeah. Schmoozing. That's it, we will call the meeting.
Off the record.